Through the regular August meeting of the zoning board of adjustment, we will be, for the most part, following our usual procedure this evening, which is to say we will take the cases in the order in which they appear in the agenda. We will ask the appellant to step forward, be sworn in, be seated in the chairs to my right, and offer any testimony in favor of the appeal that they would like us to hear. We will then ask the appellant to step down, and we will solicit testimony from anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard in favor of the appeal, or anyone who wishes to be heard in opposition to it. Following that, we will switch over to code enforcement to find out what input they might have on the subject case. And then, if there has been any testimony that appears to justify factual clarification, the appellant will have the opportunity to offer that clarification, not new evidence, prior to our closing, the public testimony portion of the hearing. In most cases, we will act on each case prior to moving on to the next. There's a couple of things going on tonight that are a little different. One, as you can see, we're a four-member board, whereas we are normally a five-member board. We can hear cases as a four-member board. It still means that there needs to be three affirmative votes for any motion to pass. That's a motion to grant or a motion to deny any request. And the fact that it has been a four-member board will not be considered grounds for a hearing. So if there is anybody who has a case on the agenda tonight who would not like to be heard by a four-member board, you have the right to wait to be heard by a five-member board. Unfortunately, we can't offer you that tonight. Is there anyone who is on the agenda who expects to be heard tonight who would not like to be heard by a four-member board? Speak now, or forever hold your peace. Okay, I don't see any hands, so I'm assuming that everyone is content with that. There is one other wrinkle in that, and that is the case 3422 72 Washington Street will be heard by a three-member board because one of our four members has a conflict of interest. And is there someone here representing 72 North Washington Street? Yes, Mr. Meckel, are you okay with that?
Yes, I already communicated that to code enforcement.
Okay, very good, thank you. With that, then, we will start the first case. It is -- this case, actually, for a little bit of background, the board did hear last month, there were several requests for variances. The board granted several requests for variances. However, there were two items on the agenda that they did not act on, and they continued the hearing to tonight. And those two items are the ones that I'll just read out to you now. This is 72 Washington Street, CN Neighborhood Commercial District, 45 Center Street. 45 Center Street. Oh, is that the -- that's the owner?
That's the name of the owners.
Ah, okay. Off to a good start. The applicant proposes to locate a restaurant with a gross floor area less than 5,000 square feet with no drive-through service, use I-1 in the table of principal uses, and is seeking variances for this proposed change of use to Article 2875, requirements for handicapped accessible parking spaces to allow no off-street accessible parking spaces where two spaces are required, and to Article 28714, off-street loading area for refuse containers to allow for no provision of off-street loading area for refuse containers where there is no area available on the existing site to provide it. Mr. Meckel?
Chris.
Swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Before you start, I did want -- there was -- Mr. Wallner pointed out that I omitted to mention something. We request that those making presentations on behalf of the appellant can find their testimony, if at all possible, to 10 minutes, and we request that those who speak from the audience can find their testimony to five minutes. We have a long agenda this evening, and you will definitely endear yourselves to the board if you comply with that request.
Thank you.
Would you identify yourselves for the record?
Friedrich Mokel of Tarbell &amp; Brodich, on behalf of the applicant. And with me tonight is Miles Tarbell of Keystone Management.
Gentlemen, proceed.
May I approach very quickly?
Yep.
Thank you. I have a handout for the board.
Thank you.
Have I been mispronouncing your name all these years? Mokel, not Meckel?
It happens every day. It rhymes with local, but...
I do apologize.
I don't mind. If I minded, I would have corrected.
I will correct my ways.
So, the chair and Mr. Wallner will recall, Attorney Specter Morgan may not, that there were two issues that concerned the board. One was the inherent absence of handicap parking, and at least several, let's say, I think it was three members, or two members concerned that the applicant didn't appear to have done legwork to remedy or ameliorate the absence of handicap parking. And then the other issue was what to do with the garbage. And so we're here tonight to answer those questions, and I'll do my best to answer them. I explored with the city what to do about handicap parking, and there exists a specific ordinance that allows the director of the Department of Public Works, we call it general services now, to simply designate a space as handicap parking. As a matter of course and practice, that doesn't happen in the city. They don't do it. They don't want to do it. And instead, they go by this process whereby someone can request a hearing with the parking committee, who, if the -- and the parking committee, if it grants the request, to recommend that the city council amend its zoning ordinance to identify and designate a parking spot on the city's right-of-way, a handicap parking. So, there is an avenue for a parking spot to be designated as a handicap spot administratively, and it's actually a license. But just to reiterate, the city's not doing that. It's not -- it doesn't want to use that ordinance. So we are relegated to this other process that is, I'd say it's triple discretionary, because the parking committee has to approve the request to recommend it to the city council, and then it's got to go through two public hearings, and then a final hearing, if it makes it that far, to become an ordinance and a properly designated municipal handicap spot. And so what you see in front of you, the first page of that, is my correspondence to Mr. Walsh of the city, and this is what one does to request a hearing in front of the parking committee, to ask the parking committee if it will approve a request to recommend to the city council to designate a spot on the city street, a handicap spot.
So you're going to start that ball rolling?
We already did. That's why I wanted to show you the letter, because I will reiterate what we said last month. Our hands are tied. We simply don't have the physical space for any parking. And our concern is if the board is inclined to approve this particular variance and put a condition on it that the variance is conditioned upon the applicant obtaining the double, or really the triple approval, that is, in my mind, that would be an impermissible condition, because it's beyond the applicant's control. The applicant has done all it can do. So it's not like a condition where this board could say, "Your hours are nine to five." That's something the applicant control. We are at the mercy of the discretion of a board and the city council. The second thing I wanted to show the board is on the second page, this is a zoom-in of the site plan that the applicant supplied to this board. And the reason I'm showing that to the board is because there are various statutory and municipal restrictions on where one, or where the city can put a parking spot on a public way. And so, in blue, there's a -- that circle there is a fire hydrant. So we can't have parking within 15 feet of that. And then, thanks for code enforcement for putting this up. Another issue is you can't have a parking spot within 20 feet of a crosswalk. And because that crosswalk on Washington is diagonal, I don't know where the measuring point would start and stop. And then there's another wrinkle, and that is, I've put it in the green writing, and if you follow Washington Street on the -- what would that be? That would be the corner of Linden and Washington, opposite from this property, there's no stop sign there. And that's an important factor, because when you don't have a stop sign, then you can park closer to the intersection. So what I've done on this drawing is show the board that, based on my -- this is a little bit better than back of the envelope, because the site plan has a scale, and I didn't send it to the surveyor, because we're not at that point yet. But I wanted to show the board how close my measurements showed that the applicant could have handicap parking in one of two locations, one on Washington and one on Linden. And I want to talk quickly about some of the variance elements, or the facts that support the variance. And I would like the chairman to allow us to include all the testimony and facts from the prior hearing, and simply, we would add that there's another unique characteristic about this building, unlike the other four commercial properties in this zone. It's the only one where the business entrance is at sidewalk level. This is the only building that could actually support, as it is, a handicap entrance. Checkmate Pizza across the street, you've got three steps. The laundromat across the street, one step up. Farther down the street is Washington Street Cafe. That's two steps. This is the only property where someone who needs access, handicap access, can go from street level to inside the building with ramps. And so we find that that's an interesting, unique factor. If the board doesn't have any questions on the parking, I'll move on to...
Congratulations, Board members.
I have one question.
Of course.
Did you get any idea of what the win-loss is with getting the handicap spots from the parking committee and the city council?
I didn't, and I respect Mr. Walsh, because he's in, like most administrators, if that's what he is, he's in a tight spot, because it's like asking a judge, "What do you think my chances are?" He can't tell you, because he doesn't sit -- I don't think he sits on the parking committee, and I'm pretty sure he doesn't sit on the city council. So I think it might be improper for him to say one way or the other.
David, do you have any idea?
I don't know.
But the thing I will follow up with is to reiterate that, based on my calculations and the application of the applicable statutes and the municipal ordinances that apply to on-street parking, we've got two golden spots. And I didn't intentionally highlight them in yellow, but, you know, that was the first color I picked, and it's workable. So, there's that. And then on the trash situation, the third page in the packet is a picture of what the southwest side of the building looks like today. And the board will see there is a vestige of a historical outdoor storage area. That's, if this gets approved, the property owner will remove that to accommodate what Mr. Tarbell has learned from Casella is the, I don't know if this is the appropriate term, but the refuse industry's solution to this problem. And that is eight 96-gallon totes, they're called, and they would be placed on the existing loading dock foundation around which would be a structure. And I've included, after that first picture showing the existing conditions, there's one depiction of, you know, a trash barrier. The second one is walled. And then, the third one, although it's not the best depiction I've ever done, I wanted to show what a completely enclosed three-dimensional object, generally that size, would appear like on, next to the building.
Would this go on the street?
No, it would not. It would go on the existing loading dock, which is part of the building's structure.
I see. So that's the white object that you've got?
Yeah. If the board were to look at the existing conditions picture, it will see that above the sidewalk is the old loading dock area, and a portion of which is now the old wooden outfit. It's not even an outbuilding or a shed, it's just...
And it's on the map up there as well.
Oh, yeah, you can see some of it there, next to it.
So the loading dock extended from the side door back to the north end of the building?
All the way, yeah. It runs from halfway all the way to the end, to the second door.
If I can...
Please.
So this is over the head and store, and the loading, the structure's right here.
Right. And that's where your city bins would go?
Correct. Totes.
Totes.
96-gallon totes.
So if you can do that, do you even need the variance?
Yes.
Why?
Because I think code will, can explain it a lot better than I can. I can run through. But I'll reiterate what I said at the last meeting, and I'm cognizant of time. As I read the city's parking ordinances, and particularly access circulation, landscaping, setbacks, and refuse issues, it has in mind that blank slate that we all love when we can get it. And I think about strip malls or other big projects where you're able to contemplate the dumpster truck being able to go in, empty it out without interfering with any other parking. That's what this is about. And you didn't have the advantage of being here last month. We ran through that. We simply don't have any space, and the space that exists on the property is already committed by site plan approval to the seven apartments in the larger building. And so we can't take anything away from there. I'll quickly say there was a conversation or two about why not put a handicap spot over on where the apartments are. Couple of problems. We have to amend the site plan, but secondly, and I think more importantly, it doesn't make a lick of sense to me, because you're actually putting the handicap parking farther away from the entrance. There's a steep slope on the north side of the building. It's a natural slope. It's, I mean, it's not a big hill, maybe five or six feet, but it's steep. And if we are put them on the other side of the parking lot, they're still walking down an icy driveway in the winter. So in my mind, that sort of defeats the whole purpose of accessible parking. So the on-street is the only location, and we've initiated that process. And unless there are questions about -- oh, final comment about trash. There is plenty of room inside the building for recycles. So the recycles will stay inside until trash day. And in fact, there's plenty of room inside for garbage in addition to these eight 96-gallon totes.
So if they're providing these trash receptacles, why do they still need a variance?
So there's also screening requirements.
Okay.
The receptacles may qualify as themselves, but if I could also, two points, and the first one goes back to the ADA parking. I don't know what the ADA standards are for distance to the entrance, and where you're selecting your parking spots, if they meet that requirement. Nothing we give a variance for. I just wanted to put that out there that there are challenges with the ADA rules. And then the variance, if you do these totes and they're larger than the existing structure that's there, you may need an additional variance for a larger encroachment to the setback. And they would not. They'd be smaller and fit within? They'd fit within what instruct that you're showing here? Correct. Okay. Then they would be fine, because it's a pre-existing structure.
And to be clear, the intent is to remove the existing wood and replace it with something that's...
Right. But when I looked at these two pictures, it looked like it was larger, so I just wanted to clarify if it is going to be larger, that may require a special variance.
Yeah. We don't, there's no intent, and I don't want to expand the footprint.
Thank you.
Thank you. So with that, unless there are any other questions?
Any questions?
Okay.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Bearing in mind that we are not dealing with the entire original case, but only items five and 11 from the original case, which had to do with the trash and the handicap space, is there anyone who would like to be heard in favor of this appeal? Is there anyone who'd like to be heard in opposition to it? Please come forward. Swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Would you identify yourself for the record as you testify, please?
Yes, Tracy Bowler. I live at 8 Linden Street with my husband, Richard, which is an apartment building that we, three-unit apartment building, that we live on the first floor. We have two, one bedroom apartments upstairs that generally are rented to law students.
What would you like us to know?
Well, I testified last month about the parking. And I will say upfront, I feel badly testifying in opposition for the project, because I think having a restaurant in this area would be terrific. However, I continue to be concerned about the proposed parking, I mean, the proposed trash situation, especially hearing that it's not being moved into the interior of the property. I've had an opportunity to see what they're proposing, you know, I don't know if it's possible to see the packet that they...
Of course.
Sorry. But I can tell you that this, that the sidewalk, all the people that live on this section of Linden Street, if they're heading to Washington Street or downtown, that's beside, that these old bins that are here, this bin here, this is essentially the sidewalk is right in front of it. And the food basket store that was here for a long time used this as their refuse. And it was a giant trash-collecting area, not just for the store, but also for the, for people walking down the street. So we continue, I continue to have that concern, that in fact, even now, after they went and cleaned up the vegetation and made this look a little, much neater than it was, people are still walking down and putting stuff there, as it's a, you know, a trash receptacle that they don't have to pay for. And so I would argue that allowing this variance would result in a detriment to the value of the properties on the section of the street. I think there's opportunities within the interior of the property. There are parking spots for the apartments, but there's also grassed area where that could be, you know, where a dumpster, a more, or even these could be placed, you know, up off of the public way. This is essentially right on the side of the public way, you know, and I just feel like our section of Linden Street shouldn't be designed to look like an alley, you know, when there's other opportunities that could be explored further for placing some kind of a trash receptacle interior of the lot. And if there's, you know, a concern on the part of the applicant about being able to get the large, I don't know what type of struc, you know, how these, you know, bins, the trash is picked up in these bins on the street, but it would seem to me that same mechanism could happen interior of the property as well, and it wouldn't have to be right on the street for all the residents, and people walking in that neighborhood to have to walk by. So...
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Questions? Thank you.
Yep. And I guess I would also just say one other thing. I know that the entrance here is narrow. If the applicant were to argue they can't get in there with trash equipment, I know they do it at other, you know, tight, 9 Jackson Street, that's right behind our house, is a nine-unit building. It has a small entrance, and I know that they get in there to deal with trash into the interior. Sorry.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to be heard? I do have a memo. Here it is. This came in via email today. It is from Paul Savage. It's extensive, so I won't read out the entire thing. It addresses several issues from the original case, but sufficient to say that Mr. Savage and Mrs. Savage are not in favor of the appeals. They have several reasons why they are not. But I will not read through the entire thing. The letter is available, and the members of the board have read it. Any comments from code enforcement?
No, sir. I already made the ones.
All right. Mr. Mokel, do you, would you like to offer any factual clarification in response to anything you've heard? Mr. Mokel, would you like to offer any factual clarification in response to anything you've heard?
Very quickly, again, this is more for Attorney Specter Morgan. The issue of the aesthetics and also, I'll say, the misuse of the public in leaving garbage at this site was talked about at the prior hearing. And we articulated our client's difficulty in managing that tenant.
And it looks like from the pictures you provided, anyway, that the bins would be locked?
We, if that's...
They could be.
If that's something the board needs, that seems like a reasonable...
They have covers.
They have covers.
And they can have padlocks on them.
And we could, and the idea is...
They guys drew a padlock.
Right.
The structure that we would replace would have some type of door that obviously if securing it's necessary or inclined by the board, we'll of course accept that.
I think the current problem though, it's a vacant building now. And people are just coming there and dumping their trash.
Yeah.
If there's a tenant there that's vibrant and they're there, they're going to look over the space. We can put cameras outside, we can stop that. And they're going to be there to keep it clean and take care of the space. And if there's any problems, Keystone's there as well. We can come in and help and do things, as we've been doing from time to time. So I think with the vacant building going away and the tenant being there, a lot of these concerns will go away. It will make a nice attractive structure, which matches the building facade. It'll match the colors of the building, and it should be a benefit.
The only other thing I'd add is that the proposed replacement area is going to be vinyl, wood, or composite. And it's going to match, as Mr. Hartwell just said, to match the building color. And the only thing, factual clarification I would add to the Savage, Mr. Savage and his wife's comments is I would point out to the board that the Savages purchased their property in 1995, when this market was busier and had a volume that was much greater than it is today. And again, this is for Attorney Specter Morgan. We spent some time at the prior meeting talking about how this use is not going to have a real impact on traffic because we had to look at the trip generations to make sure we were below the major site plan threshold, and we were within that 200 daily trips tolerance.
Okay. You're back into territory where you're already safe.
But I do have one more question.
Okay, sure.
Why can't you put a dumpster somewhere else on the property? I'm sure you covered it, and I missed it.
Again, because that would require complete reapproval or modification of the site plan for the seven-unit apartment building.
Yeah.
And those spaces are, it has its own handicap and parking requirements, and we just don't have the space for it there.
Not that, but the trap, why can't you put a trash bin?
Oh, that's a steep hill.
Okay.
I would, I don't know if Code's interested in doing it, but at this hearing, the easiest thing to do would go to like a Bing Maps or Google Maps.
Didn't work. I tried that for you earlier.
Okay. That is the problem. It is very steep.
Okay.
And so if you see where that car is...
Yep.
I would say the difference is about probably five feet from the street to there.
So these are contour lines, so it does have some slope to it.
Okay, thank you.
That's, so we did look at, we investigated that as well. Unless there are any other questions, we're done.
I don't believe so. Question? Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, that will declare the public testimony portion of the hearing closed. We heard testimony that the handicap parking space, designating a handicap parking space is theoretically feasible and that the appellant has initiated the process for requesting that from the city, but it's ultimately a city decision. We also heard testimony that they have come up with a specific strategy for dealing with the trash, including enclosures, which can be sealed on the side of the building. Nick, what do you think?
Well, in terms of the trash, I recall from the previous hearing that the accumulation of trash was really because it was, the building was vacant. And I think that certainly contributed to that. I think what they're offering is, a solution is acceptable. I would be inclined to approve the dumpster alternative that they proposed.
Laura?
I agree with the condition that they be secured somehow so that the public can't put trash in there.
Very good. Do I hear a motion?
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second, with the condition that they be secured.
Correct.
Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The vote is unanimous. The variances are granted. The next case, thirty-six...
Did we do both of them? I thought we were just doing trash.
Yeah, we just did trash.
Oh, we did?
Yeah.
Boy, I'm a little overeager, aren't I? All right. We've done trash, let's go to handicap. I'm sorry, I thought we were dealing with both.
So I would be in favor of voting to approve the variance for handicap parking as well, while there is feasibly a location on the property where they could put it. And while I don't think having to amend their site plan is an unnecessary hardship, I do believe that putting the handicap parking further away from the entrance would not be as beneficial as having a space designated on the street. So I would be in favor of granting the variance.
Nick?
I would second that.
Anyone care to make a motion?
I'll move it.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. The vote is unanimous. And now the variances are granted. The next case, I was, I neglected to mention, thirty-six twenty-two has been withdrawn this evening. So if you're here for thirty-two Manchester Street Gateway Performance District, we will not be hearing that case. You need not, you need not remain. So the next case we will be hearing is case thirty-seven twenty-two, Two Seventy Loudon Road, Steeplegate Mall, GWP Gateway Performance District. The property owner is Steeplegate Mall Realty LLC and Steeplegate CH LLC and Steeplegate Nassim LLC. This is a recessed case, but we did not hear testimony earlier. The applicant wishes to utilize plus or minus two acres of the parking lot on the easterly side of the overall property, which is currently part of the Steeplegate Mall site plan, to allow its use for truck and automobile maneuvers as part of a commercial driving school, which is not an allowed use. The applicant seeks a variance to Article 28-24J to allow commercial driving school use B3 where such a use is not allowed. Is there someone here from Steeplegate Mall?
No, but we're here for commercial driving school.
All right. Are you authorized to represent Steeplegate Mall?
Yeah, we have a signed authorization.
Well, then, come on up.
Yes, this was from a previous recess.
Swear to tell the truth and nothing but?
We do.
Would you identify yourselves for the record as you testify, please?
James Amico, owner of Commercial Driving School Concord, New Hampshire.
Kathleen Amico, co-owner of Commercial Driving School.
What would you like us to know?
As far as the use, well, actually, Jim, you go ahead.
Well, thank you all for the opportunity to speak today. Our current landlord at seventy Pembroke Road, which people know around town as the old spring building, I believe he has plans to demolish the building in December of 2023, which leaves us kind of in a hardship to do our normal maneuvers with three tractor-trailers and a box truck. We need more room. We currently have one acre, very cramped. I sought out the Steeplegate Mall leasing agent, and they came up with an idea that perhaps the overflow lot, which is right off One O-six North, just before you get to Diamante, it's that right turn right at the TD Bank North. If you, as soon as you enter that spur, bank's on your left, and the lot I'm looking for is on the right. It's plus or minus two acres. We have secured a tentative lease, which I can get out of if it's not approved, for August first to July thirty-first of next year. Upon approval, I would put in a double swing gate without harming the property. The two twelve-foot mechanisms of swing gate would be pivoting off of cement blocks that can be removed at a later time and secured. We would also have a, what you would call a porta potty on the premises for the students and of course locked at night because I know there is some traffic there at night with people. We only operate Monday through Friday, eight to five-thirty, but the trucks are only on lot for maneuvers two hours a day in a pinch. If we had a lot of rain, we'd double up on the next day, do a four-hour. Not a lot of activity in the lot. Half the course is where the students are doing pre-trip, where the truck is not moving. It is out of the way. Again, it would be gated. We do not feel it poses any risk to any neighboring entities. We are a private school. There are seventy-two private driving schools in the state. It's not your traditional public school where you drop the speed zone ten miles per hour.
Because everybody is over eighteen. Everybody in our school is an adult. So public school variances and things like that don't apply to just a parking lot that would be completely separate and secure. It would not impact roadway traffic or even the people that are, very few of them that are still in the mall doing business and so forth.
Right. It's a very, I do have outstanding upkeep of my equipment. And again, we do not think it would pose any difficulty to any neighbor or such in that, especially where the mall is basically vacant except for a few anchor places, the trampoline place and a few others. So it's pretty much dead there.
And the mall, and the lease would only be for one year?
One year.
No extensions at all? That's it? So that's, that's all we want to do, is have adults in there in a secured area that does not impact traffic or any other businesses?
To give you an idea, we put through approximately 150 tractor-trailer students a year. We were voted the most successful trucking school in the country, which we're very proud of. We put a lot of drivers on the road, and we do it right. And we're very thankful to be part of the Concord community. Thank you.
Questions from the board?
Would you store the vehicles at night? I'm sorry, I didn't get that.
We would store them fifty percent there at night, three vehicles, or back at our seventy Pembroke Road. If they were coming in off of a drive at the end of the day, five o'clock, there would be no need to run the equipment all the way back down to Steeplegate when we can just leave them on our lot at night at seventy Pembroke.
These are semi-trailer trucks?
Yes. Two tractor-trailers with van trailers, one tractor-trailer with a flatbed, one spare tractor, and one twenty-five-foot box truck. Yep.
Other questions?
When you say, you seem pretty sure, no extensions, that's what the landlord told you?
Yeah.
Okay. So it would only be for a year?
Right.
Correct.
Because we think they intend to sell the entire property to a larger company. But the only reason we're feeling the need to do this is our current landlord, who had communicated that he intended to demolish the lot that we have, that we've been paying for for 12 years, will not tell us when. And a year ago, he said it would be last January, but nothing's happened. And we just can't be out of business. We're the only people producing tractor-trailer drivers in a nation where there's no tractor-trailer drivers.
We received a certified letter early April this year that he will not be renewing the lease and along with the other tenants inside the building.
So you'll figure out a longer-term plan after this? But this gives you a way to keep operating?
Gives me a way to...
Yeah.
Kind of...
Transition.
Yeah, transition.
Yeah.
Other questions? Yes?
I appreciate the pick you're in, and you seem like great people with a great business. But in order to get a variance, there's got to be something about the property that makes it different from other property, such that the way the zoning ordinance applies to it is different. And while this may be a very well-suited location for this use, you haven't really addressed in your application what special conditions there are about this property. Can you do that?
Special as far as, well, it's separate. It's enclosed. So that's ideal for us. Like even where we are now, we get more trespassers on a daily basis because there's no security. And just having the closed-off curb makes it unique.
Right.
And putting a small gate across solves the issue of people driving through there and doing what they're going to do.
One of the appealing factors when I spoke with the leasing agent is the floodlights in that parking lot stay on all night, which trucks are visible. My trucks have cameras in them. If there was any hanky panky going on, I would see it and hear about it. Also, it is much larger, so we're not in a confined area. It would be doubling our space. And...
And it's got the most wonderful, the pattern of the spaces that were already in there would work perfectly through, as far as practice routes and things like that.
Thank you.
Does that answer your question?
I think to the best that you can answer my question. That answers my question, yes. Thank you.
Other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone who'd like to be heard in favor of this appeal? Is there anyone who'd like to be heard in opposition to it? Comments from code enforcement?
Thank you. From the code standpoint, I did reach out to the city. They didn't want to submit anything official, but the city has been working with the mall ownership, asking for a master plan for their long-term plans for this facility or the property. We haven't received any solid feedback from the ownership there as to what they're doing. From a code standpoint, the variance runs with the land. The variance goes to the whole property. I can appreciate that they will only take, say they're only going to take two to five acres or whatever they're talking about, but there are really no restrictions that we can say they could expand later to a larger, more functioning area if the variance is granted as a whole. I don't think we can leave a condition for one year on a variance. Again, it runs with the property forever.
I think we could limit the area, but I don't think we can limit the time.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that's, that's just the city's standpoint as far as my concerns there.
Can I ask you a question? Does use, is this a generic school use? Does it fall under the category of any type of school? Like a, you know, more traditional type of school?
I believe so. It's certainly not, I mean, it's in the gateway performance, and that's not the vision that the city has for the development of the GWP area. I wasn't here, Ernie Kreveling did all the interpretation of this last year, so I really don't know where he categorized it. But to answer your question, from my standpoint, I believe it falls under the school...
It would, it falls under school as like, what would typically be like an indoor learning, but it's lumped in with them for purposes of the code? Okay.
And then the other question I'd have, if they get approved, is I also, first I hear of an outside potty for an external business. I don't know if that's, would need its own variance also. But if there's not a facility there, they might be okay. And that might be an answer to that. But the city really doesn't like those hanging around permanently.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Amico, would you like to offer any factual clarification in response to anything you've heard?
The only thing that comes to mind is, to my understanding from Deborah Cherillo, the leasing manager on site, that there was a charter school in there. No longer there now, but they, they were in there.
They also had a variance?
Yes.
Maybe more than one? Very good. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
With that, we'll declare the public testimony portion of the hearing closed. We heard testimony that the appellant would like to operate a truck-driving school on some property that is not, where that use is not allowed at the mall. We heard testimony that the mall is underusing its parking areas and that the, this was a good use from the point of view of the appellant and presumably the mall. We also heard testimony that the city has concerns about the overall future development of this site as a retail space. Discussion? Andrew, what do you think?
Well, I don't think they really addressed Laura's question very well, but I think that, you know, in just looking at it from my knowledge of that property, I mean, that's a really obscure portion of the land. Like that, even when the mall was in full operation and, you know, was at its peak, Like, that, even when the mall was in full operation and, you know, was at its peak, I wonder how many people were parking. I didn't even really realize there was parking all the way out there. There's like borders of swamp or whatever that is. So, assuming it's true that we can limit the scope to that, what's circled in yellow as a condition. Agreed. Of course, we can't limit the time, so that's kind of irrelevant, but we can limit the scope. I, I think it's, it's, it's a unique property. I mean, of course, it's unique. It's, it's a, but I think, I think it's a reasonable use in that little nook because it's just, it's going to have very little contact with any other, any type of activity, really.
Laura?
I think it's a great use in that nook. And I think the property is unique in general, but I don't think there's anything about the property's uniqueness that relates to the way the zoning ordinance affects it. I think the other criteria are met, but I can't get past the unnecessary hardship.
Nick?
Well, I agree with Andrew about the uniqueness. I mean, it's only got one entrance, so it's, it's really, uh, off the beaten path. Uh, in terms of, uh, you know, we, and also keeping in mind that we did, um, granted variance for a charter school, um, on the, on that property.
Very good. Uh, I'm inclined to agree with Laura. I, it's right where I'd put my driving school if I had one, but, um, I'm having a hard time justifying from the point of view of the limits on our power, finding that there's a hardship there that's dictated by the property. Yeah, it's, it's a unique property, but it's not. That in and of itself doesn't, doesn't have to create a hardship. So, where does that leave us? That leaves us with a motion from anyone who cares to make it?
Yeah, I'll move approval.
Is there a second?
I second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All opposed?
No.
No. The motion fails for lack of three votes.
So, now I'll make a motion to deny the variance?
Is there a second?
That would have to be you.
I guess it would. My goodness, I don't think I've ever seconded a motion before. So, I'll second it. Uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
I guess that leaves us with, uh, no result.
It leaves us with a variance that is not approved.
Yeah. Because we haven't approved it.
Right.
So, um, I'm not quite sure it's actually denied.
It's not denied. It's just not approved.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Where, where does that leave them? That they, could they try to come back?
What the legal implications of that are?
They can file a motion for a hearing and see if they convince us we've erred.
They can file it for a re, but they can't...
Then we could have a five-member board.
But only on the facts presented, which, which frankly, that's pretty straightforward.
But they couldn't, they couldn't refile their case with the same facts.
No.
Right.
Substantial difference would be required.
Yeah. So, in effect...
Right, yeah.
In effect, it's a denial unless they were going to a rehearing. All right.
So, we just move to adjourn this hearing? What, do we have?
No, I think we've dealt with it as far as...
We've done all we can do.
This is just done.
Yeah. Uh, the next case is, can we turn that air conditioner down a little bit? Get a little cooler?
I'm not sure.
Oh.
Can I take a two-minute break?
Yeah, 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 sure.
Yeah, when you set it down, I got nervous. Yeah. Up, down, however you want.
Whatever you do to make it cooler.
You could wear short sleeves.
No, that wouldn't be fitting.
You could wear a tank top with that.
You shouldn't be in keeping with my sententious dignity.
I was, I was happy to for your dignity.
Back in the bad old days of the plague, I wore a plaid shirt, just like Andrew. Uh, we can call up the case. Uh, one board member has taken a brief recess, but she'll be right back. Forty Rockingham Street, RM Medium Density Residential District, uh, by Brian Sarterelli, owner. The applicant wishes to remove an existing six-by-eight-foot porch with steps and replace with a six-foot by twenty-four-foot farmer's porch with steps on the front of an existing single-family dwelling and request a variance to Article twenty-eight, four-one-H, Table of Dimensional Regulations, to permit a structure to be located thirteen-point-seven-five feet plus or minus from the southerly front property line where a twenty-five-foot setback is required. Gentlemen, you swear to tell the truth and nothing but?
Indeed.
Would you have a seat, please, and identify yourselves for the record?
I'm Brian Sarterelli. I'm the owner of forty Rockingham Street, and this is my general contractor.
I'm Greg Baer, owner of Knollstone Contracting. Uh, we've been working with, uh, the Sarterellis on trying to get this, uh, up and running. This is a project where the original porch, built in nineteen forty-one circa, had rotted completely off of the house, had already stuck out six feet. And so, instead of trying to go closer to the street, we wanted to go laterally down the house. And that's where Dario and I kind of, that's basically where this started. So, the, the front porch had essentially, um, experienced significant rot where the pillars that were, that were there had fallen. Um, I have several small children, five of them currently, six on the way, which my wife's due date is today, so we're here.
Unfortunately, that's not one of the criteria for granting a variance.
Should have put it in there.
Congratulations, anyway.
Thank you. Uh, so what you see currently were a set of, um, uh, cement stairs that, that were there and the, the portion that was just beyond that was a wood portion was where it was rotted off. And the two pillars, um, that were hanging the Celtics flag there, um, have also rotted, uh, at the bottom, causing the roof to pull away from the house. So, essentially, it was a safety hazard as it stands right now. Um, and I, it, I had to remove that because it was a safety hazard. My, my, um, mailman would not go to our front porch. We have a mail slot in the front door. Our mail now has to get delivered to the side door because he fell through. So, I don't want to beat a dead horse on that one, but that needed to go. So, uh, in the meantime, we thought it would be more aesthetically pleasing in order to put a farmer's porch along the front of the house, um, again, to not only watch the kiddos run around, but to be a little bit more, uh, aesthetically pleasing to the eye. And, uh, I'll add, with the exact same dimensions, it does not encroach on the street any more than the old porch used to. It would just run laterally down the house.
In front of the bag?
In front of the bay window, yep. So, that, that plant is no longer there. Um, and that would run from, correct way from that corner, uh, to the other far-right side pillar. So, the zoning for that particular set of the south end, I believe, is?
RM?
RN. Um, so that's twenty-five. As the existing porch sat by itself, was only thirteen feet off of the street, uh, off of the sidewalk. Uh, to the street from the house is thirty-one feet. From the sidewalk to the house is twenty-one feet, as it sits right now. And I think if you, if you wanted to scroll, not to use anybody else's houses as example, I don't think there is a house on that street that falls underneath these setbacks. There, there may be one or two. I think there may be one or two. I walked the neighborhood with a tape measure to try and make sure that I wasn't going crazy.
The neighbors must have loved that.
Yeah, they, they were all in favor. They, I, I think you guys actually got a, a letter from our next-door neighbor. He sent it into Mr. Hall, I believe.
Do you have anything, David?
I, I didn't see anything in the packet. I don't believe. He might have sent it to Dario.
No, he, he sent it to Mr. Hall.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry, there is an email. That was my mistake. I'll read that to the board, sir.
Okay.
From Mr. Tenzar?
Very good.
Yes, right, right across the street from me.
Okay.
Uh, he, he's in full support of this as well and, and we, um, collected a lot of, uh, a lot of support during this whole debacle. I, this is the first time I've ever done any of this, so, first major renovation on the exterior of my house. Didn't even realize this was a thing and...
You mean, how did you go to the zoning board?
Yeah, it is. I've, I've never done this before.
Uh, is there, are there any questions?
So, just to summarize, basically, uh, you, you're replacing an existing structure, same footprint, no additional encroachment from the previous porch. Is that correct?
Not to the roadside of things, however, laterally. So, it's going to go from an eight-foot wide to a twenty-four-foot to run the length of the front house. But it's not encroaching towards the street any more than the original one was, which now no longer exists uh, because of rot, termites, ants and what have you.
Would, would it be, oh, I'm sorry, would it be possible to, to, to show, to pan out one and show their whole lot? Does it go all the way back there?
It does. It has a double lot onto Hope Avenue.
So, you've got quite a big lot?
I do.
It's an unusual-sized lot, too.
There we go, sorry.
It is. It's an L-shaped lot. I have the layout. Uh, actually, you guys, you should all have, uh, the layout.
Oh, yeah.
It's perfect for a family of eight.
Give or take.
Give or take. This is it. I swear.
Writing that down.
It is, I do it.
Your wife is writing that down.
Any other questions from the board? Andrew, you good?
Yeah.
Anything else you'd like us to know?
She'll be all set.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Is there anyone here who'd like to be heard in favor of this appeal? I do have a, uh, an email here, which is addressed to Mr. Hall from Anthony Tenzar, who has, uh, lives at thirty-three Rockingham Street, across the street. Both he and his wife Pamela Powers support the variance for them to build their new porch. Many homes in this section of Rockingham Street have both, have front setbacks less than they are asking for, so their request is completely reasonable and in keeping with the character of the street. Is there anyone who'd like to be heard in opposition? Any comments from code enforcement?
No, sir.
With that, we'll close the public testimony portion of the hearing. We have a request to extend what was an existing porch, uh, across the entire front of the building, uh, continuing a setback violation, front yard setback violation that existed before. What do you think, Nick?
You know, this is a pretty standard request that we've, uh, done in the past where there's no additional encroachment to the setback, just a lateral, uh, extension. Um, so, um, I'm inclined to, to move approval on this.
Laura?
I don't have any issue with this. Um, and in the interest of our new law, which requires findings of fact for every variance, um, I would say that looking at the aerial view, it would not alter the essential character of the neighborhood, that I don't believe it will diminish surrounding property values, that there is no benefit to the town, to the city, from denying it, and that there is an unnecessary hardship giving the location of the existing house and the existing porch and the porch's current condition. So, I would be in favor.
Thank you. Andrew?
I agree with what Lauren Nick said.
As do I. Would anyone care to make a motion?
I'll move to approve for the reasons I stated.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? The vote is unanimous. The variance, was it one variance or two?
Two.
Two variants.
No, no, it's one.
One variance. The variance is granted. You're all settled. Best wishes to you and your wife.
A newborn.
And the newborn. All right. Uh, the next case this evening is Case forty-two-two-nine Eldred Street, uh, RS Single Family Residential District by Orrin Reno for William Young Properties LLC. The applicant wishes to rebuild a home on an existing foundation and seeks variances to Article twenty-eight, eight-three, C-two-A, Conditions for Development of Non-Conforming Lot, to permit the reconstruction of a single-family dwelling on a non-conforming lot lacking a minimum of twenty-two feet of frontage on an accepted city street, and Article twenty-eight, four-one-D, Minimum Yard Requirements, to permit the reconstruction of a single-family dwelling with a front yard setback of approximately twenty-four-point-six feet, where twenty-five feet is required, a westerly side yard setback of twelve feet, where fifteen feet is required, and an easterly side yard setback of fourteen-point-nine feet, where fifteen feet is required. Uh, do we have anyone here from Orrin Reno or William Young, William Young Properties? Apparently, we have both. Good evening, gentlemen. Do you swear to tell the truth and nothing but?
Yes.
Would you identify yourselves for the record as you testify, please?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I'm John Arnold from Orrin Reno.
William Young?
He's a property owner.
What would you like us to know?
Uh, so the property is nine Eldred Street, and the lot is a pre-existing non-conforming lot, both with respect to size and frontage. It had a house on it that was built in the nineteen-sixties. It was partially damaged by fire in twenty-seventeen. Initially, the plan was to rehab it. Uh, that didn't work out. The damage was more extensive than thought, so the house was completely demolished in twenty-twenty-one, um, except for the foundation, which remains. Uh, Mr. Young now seeks to rebuild a home on the existing foundation. It would be in like time with what was there before. It's a single-story ranch, about fourteen-hundred square feet, three bedrooms, two baths. Our application asks for two variances. First is the frontage variance. The ordinance requires twenty-two feet of frontage on a public road to build on a non-conforming lot. This section of Eldred Street, you can see on the aerial, it's actually dirt. That entire dirt section is a private, uh, street. It's not, it's not a public way. Um, there are five houses on this private portion of Eldred Street. The property has a deeded right-of-way for access to it. Um, there isn't any way to get any, uh, frontage on this property on a public street unless Eldred Street were to become public, so without the variance, uh, the property couldn't be, uh, put back to use. The second variance are the setbacks. Uh, the existing foundation and building footprint encroached into the front yard setback and also each side yard setback. Uh, the, the encroachments are very minor. Twenty-six, twenty-four-point-six feet in the front, where twenty-five feet is required, fourteen-point-nine feet on the east, where fifteen is required, and twelve feet on the west, where fifteen feet is required. So, the greatest encroachment here is three feet, some matter of inches in the front, uh, and on the east side. And those encroachments have been here since the nineteen-sixties, when I said the initial house was, um, first built until it was demolished in twenty-one. Um, without the setback variances, the, uh, existing foundation would need to be removed. The new foundation would need to be poured, really just to shift the, you know, house by a few inches here and, and a few feet there. Uh, so we think that reusing the existing foundation is really the most practical solution that won't cause any new impacts in the neighborhood or, or be detrimental, uh, in any way. Mr. Young has reached out to the two neighbors on either side. Uh, neither expressed any concern about the, uh, the reconstruction.
Very good. Questions from the board?
What's the, I mean, if, if, in your opinion, what's the rationale of the frontage requirement uh, only applying to public roads as opposed to a private road with a deeded right-of-way? Because it would seem, why wouldn't, why shouldn't that count?
Well, I think historically, it's because the municipalities want to ensure that there's an adequate means that's well-maintained and, you know, have control over to assure, you know, access by emergency vehicles and things like that. And they have less control over that when it's a private way. Um, in this case, that's been the way the road has been for, you know, over a hundred years. And, uh, you know, I don't think there, we're not aware of any issues with access or anything like that to the other residences that are served by it.
Thank you.
Yes.
Is this, I know Airport Road is a public road. Is this other road a public road, too?
On the left side?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
It doesn't pass through, though.
No.
I should say, yeah.
You're all set. Very good. Is there anything else you'd like us to know?
No, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Is there anyone who'd like to be heard in favor of this appeal? Is there anyone who'd like to be heard in opposition to it? Any comments from code enforcement?
No, sir.
As I understand it, this would not require a variance had they been back within the year, correct?
Yes, that is true.
Of the demolition of the house?
Of the natural...
Of the, of the fire?
Right.
Okay. Discussion. Nick, what do you think?
Again, historically, anytime that somebody replaces something on an existing footprint, we've tended to grant the variance. Um, I think the setback issue, that there's a hardship right there. This is a, a very small lot and, um, what, I don't see anything being gained by asking them to move the foundation six inches.
No, certainly substantial justice would not be done. Laura?
Um, I agree, um, on the frontage variance. I think that there's an unnecessary hardship because the road exists the way it is, and there was a house on it, which could have been rebuilt had it been done in a timely manner. It's a well-traveled and apparently well-maintained private road, and there are accesses to public roads nearby so emergency vehicles can get in there. And with regard to the setbacks, I think the unnecessary hardship is the existence of the foundation. Um, and I agree, it doesn't make any sense to make them move it for a matter of three feet. I think this would not, neither variance would alter the essential character of the neighborhood or diminish surrounding property values. So, I would be in favor of granting both variances.
Andrew?
I agree, and I, the only thing I would add is it, it, it seems in good faith that they didn't sit on their rights. They were hoping to, to renovate, and it just turned out not to be possible. It's not like they waited twenty or thirty years and then were trying to take, you know, take advantage of the fire. So, it, it seems, you know, reasonable.
Very good. I agree with everything that I've heard my colleagues say. I think there is a hardship, and, uh, I think the rationale for substantial justice is clearly present. Anyone care to make a motion?
I will move to approve both variances for the reasons discussed.
Second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? None ayes. The variances are granted.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Which brings us to Case forty-three-tw-two for Park Ridge Road, RS Single Family Residential District by Brian, uh, Oshwald or Oshwald, I'll, I'll stand corrected. And Dan Elise, owners. The applicant wishes to build a fourteen-by-twenty-two-foot screen porch on the northerly side of an existing single-family dwelling and request a variance to Article twenty-eight, four-one-H, Table of Dimensional Regulations, to permit a structure to be located at thirteen, thirteen-point-seven feet plus or minus from the easterly side property line where a fifteen-foot setback is required. Do you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but?
I do.
May we have your name, please?
My name is Peter Howell, and I'm representing the owners. It's, uh, Elise, Dan and Brian Oshwald. The property that's here, I'd say it certainly has a hardship, if not many. It's like properties we've all driven by before and looked at it and said, "That one needs a little love." This is one of those. They're asking to build on the back of the house, so I think it fits the spirit of the ordinance, the yard ordinance, to be able to use their backyard, have a beautiful backyard, and to continue upgrading their home. There's parts of the home that need some attention. The house, I'd say its biggest hardship is it's under a lead order, and for the owners, they have to address that. These owners have the means to invest in the property, and they're willing to invest in the property.
Sorry, what kind of order?
A lead order.
Thank you.
And the lead needs to be abated in their home. It's partially done, but they need to continue and finish that part of the process. They're just asking for a portion of the spirit of the ordinance to be allowing that addition, where the home exists as a exception, being only 12.2 feet from the line. There's homes in the area that are, have garages or retaining systems, or they're encroaching themselves into the property. They aren't allowed on this side of the home to have a lot-line adjustment, so they're asking for this variance to be granted.
So the porch would be in violation, but the deck would not?
The deck would, no, the deck would be to the inside. That would continue farther from the property lines.
Okay, so this only pertains to the porch?
Yes, and the variances to the east property line, which is to the top right in this picture?
Yes. Yeah, I understand.
Do you want to go first?
No, you go ahead.
Two questions. First, do I assume correctly you cannot put this on the driveway side of the house because of the sloping there?
Well, there's issues on the driveway side with access to a walk-in basement, so this wouldn't be, this wouldn't be able to.
That's where the.
Correct.
Okay.
That would be on the driveway side.
Okay. And then my second question is, why can't you just make the porch a foot shorter so it complies?
They could. They could. They're just asking for a variance to allow them to enjoy the yard and to enjoy the backyards in this area. Theirs is fairly large, so adding to the home in the back and asking for the variance would be in contrast to asking for a variance in the front. It wouldn't cause a safety issue. It wouldn't cause a congestion issue, so they're just asking for that exception.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions on the board?
She asked my question.
Nick, any questions?
No.
I'm good like that, aren't I?
I won't tell you which one it was. One of those you asked was mine.
Connected to Ms. Specter Morgan's question, why not simply shift the porch over a foot and make the deck a foot smaller?
They have windows that exist in the home, and to shift it over would be eliminating another window. They're already losing one window in the home, so they're trying to fit it in, and they're trying to maximize the space by fitting it into what exists in the character of the home already.
I see. Very good. Is there anything else you'd like us to know?
No, thank you.
Thanks. Is there anyone who'd like to be heard in favor of this appeal? Is there anyone who'd like to be heard in opposition to it? Please come forward. Swear to tell the truth and nothing but?
I do.
May we have your names, please?
I'm Marlene Goldman. I'm the homeowner of 125 Center Street.
Could I get the first name again, please?
Marlene.
And Michael Ellenbecker, Marlene's spouse, also at 125 Center Street. And although this is on Park Ridge, there's a small park in front, so we're actually across the street neighbors of Brian and Elise, so we're facing the property directly. And I'll say that when they bought the house two years ago, we were very happy that they did, because this was a rental property, obviously needed some attention. And I would say in characterizing Brian and Elise's approach is that they have a hard time completing. They've had a lot of work going on for two years. I'm sorry I didn't bring copies of them, but I took a couple pictures of what the lot looks like this week, if you'd like to look. On the left side, where the driveway is, it's a complete construction zone, as you see in the picture. There's piles of rubble, there's partially completed work, there's.
Temporary structures.
There's temporary structures, you know.
Porta-potty.
For vehicles. And so we're concerned about them taking on an additional project when they haven't been able to finish the projects that they've already started, besides the lead abatement. They have a lot of stuff going on, and they haven't finished it. So we're, we hate to testify against them. We want to be good neighbors, but we're looking at this. This has an adverse impact on the neighborhood property values. It's been going on for two years. We have no clue about when they would clean up the mess that they have there now, so we would ask the board to disapprove this until they can finish the work that they've started already. We're worried that they'll start another project that they won't be able to finish in any reasonable amount of time. So, although we won't see that directly because we're facing the driveway, and so if they did add this addition, we would not necessarily be against that. We just want them to finish what they've started before they start a new project. Thank you.
Do you want to make these part of the record, or do you want them back?
Sure, that's fine. Those are taken yesterday.
Okay.
We just don't understand if there are any guidelines for what can happen on a property. There's now a porta potty, a dumpster, piles of rubble, all sorts of construction materials in back and on the side, and this has been true for two years. So we're concerned that starting another project is just going to perpetuate the situation as it is.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to be heard in opposition? Any comments from code enforcement?
No, sir.
Very good. Mr. Howe, would you like to offer factual clarification in response to anything you've heard?
I, yes, I am also helping them to address some of those issues with the appearance and the safety and the construction. They have had trouble with contractors backing out of fulfilling their contracts with them, and they're interested in certainly helping the neighborhood and applying to the quality. I think that when they do finish, it'll certainly affect the property values in a positive way. There's no question about that, and I think that that's important, but construction areas and construction zones have that unappealing view to them, and that's what they're going through right now.
Thank you very much. With that, we'll declare the public testimony portion of the hearing closed. We have a request for a side yard setback of a foot, I think it was.
1.3.
1.3. We heard testimony that they didn't actually have to build the porch where they show it, that they could build it within the setbacks. We also heard testimony from the neighbors that they have some concern about the progress of the construction. Andrew, start at your end. What do you think?
Well, I think that, I mean, it's a pretty, it's a very modest request, and if he had come up with any plausible reason related to the land or the house in terms of architecturally or aesthetically or something with the land, why they needed to bump out that far, but he really, I mean, he's very honest, and it could just as easily be 1.3 feet less. There's no, it's just a little more space, so I can't really see the hardship. It doesn't really have anything to do with what the neighbor said. That's not within, you know, within our scope. I just have a hard time seeing the hardship, because when Laura asked him point-blank, he was pretty honest about it.
Laura?
Yeah, notwithstanding the concerns of the neighbors, which are valid concerns but don't have anything to do with the variance, I agree with Andrew. There's no unnecessary hardship here. They can build a screened porch that complies with the ordinance, and there's no reason, in my opinion, to grant this variance. I think the other variance criteria are met, but just not that one.
Well, I thought I heard that he would have to eliminate one additional window.
To move the whole thing, but to just make it shorter, just take a foot off of it.
I wasn't clear on that, whether it was shortening it would affect the window or moving it would affect the window.
No, he said they could build it shorter.
I mean, if anything, if he makes it shorter, he might be able to add a window in there if he wanted.
I, I don't have enough to go on to say that there's a hardship here that requires that the porch be, that it's an unnecessary hardship to ask them to build the porch within the setbacks, so I'd have a hard time saying that there's a hardship, and if you can't say there's a hardship, the rest of it is unnecessary to say. Would anyone care to make a motion?
I will make a motion that we deny the variance on the basis that there is no unnecessary hardship, because the porch can be built in conformance with the ordinance.
Is there a second?
I second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
The only thing I'll say is now, a porch can be built that would still be a very large porch, you know, characteristic of this neighborhood. It's not really confining them.
Very good. All in favor of the motion? We got a motion to deny, right?
Motion to deny, yeah.
And it's been seconded?
Yes.
All in favor of the motion to deny? Please say aye.
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 Aye. Anyone opposed? The vote is unanimous. The variance, it was one variance.
One.
And it is denied. That brings us to Case 179 Pembroke Road, OFP Office Park Performance District by Jeremy Eggleton Esquire for Proverbs 16:3 LLC owner. The applicant seeks review of administrator's decision interpreting permissible uses under the ordinance. The code administrator letter dated June 1, 2022 determined that the complex of 62 monolithic domes to be used for short and long-term rentals is not an allowed use in the district's zoned OFP without zoning relief. In this case, we are not considering a request for a variance. We're considering a request to overrule the determination of the code enforcement officer concerning whether or not a variance is required for the proposed use. Ladies and gentlemen, swear to tell the truth and nothing but? Would you identify yourselves for the record as you testify, please?
Thank you. My name is Jeremy Eggleton with the law firm of Orrin Reno on behalf of Proverbs 16:3 LLC.
And I am Casey DiStefano on behalf of Proverbs 16:3 LLC.
So, first of all, thank you, of course, as always, for your service, and thank you for giving me a little time tonight to talk about this application that we've submitted. I'm hoping that I can convince you by dint of my extreme enthusiasm for this project that it's the right thing for the city of Concord. And then on top of that, I think that we've got a strong legal basis for overruling this decision, so, because it's the most exciting part to me, I'm going to start with how cool this project is. If you look at, let me actually go back to what the original concept was when it was proposed to the zoning and planning folks. And I think the reference was made to 62 monolithic concrete domes, and, you know, as a New Hampshire guy, myself, of longstanding, I can understand how that might terrify some people, being, you know, a conservative state in many respects. But I, you know, personally, am a huge fan of cool architecture. I think that I get Dwell magazine, believe it or not, and I like cool buildings. I also love innovative, forward-thinking solutions to serious public policy issues. And this particular project checks all of those boxes. What you're looking at here is a rendering by Novus Engineering of what this lot would look like if the proposed facility were actually to be implemented, at least from above. And you can see the 62 dome-like structures here along a winding parking area, and then the interior circle at the end for turnaround, and then at the start, you would have a office-type facility where guests of whatever duration they were staying would check in, get their keys. There might be a store or a laundry facility there. And in my application, I think I likened this proposal to the kinds of sort of motor-based tourism features we had more commonly in this state in the 60s and 70s, you know, where you had lots of little cottages, you know, along the side of the road, and you could get your key and spend a couple of weeks there touring Franconi Annotch or what have you. So this would be an overview rendering of the facility. The next document in the packet is a series of emails from my client, Ms. DiStefano, where she reached out to other zoning entities in the state amongst the other larger cities and towns in the state to inquire as to whether there were any issues under their ordinances with the duration of a stay in a hotel or motel and whether there was any limitation there, because at one point in the discussions between my client and the city, that was raised as a potential issue, that the city of Concord views transient stays, transient lodging as being limited to 30 days. And I'm going to address that when I talk about the legalities a little bit, but it doesn't appear as though any other city takes that position. And as I advised my client, it doesn't really matter if no other city takes that position, if Concord takes that position, but I don't think Concord takes that position, so that's what I'd like to talk about in a few minutes. The next document are some examples of this very cool project that have actually been implemented in other parts of the country. The first one is called The In Place, which is in Brenham, Texas. And you might say that Texas doesn't have any zoning, so we shouldn't be thinking about projects in Texas, but I submit that this kind of project would not only look interesting and be a nice asset for the city of Concord, but it would answer a lot of problems that we're having. I also happen to think that the form of the building itself is very cool. If you've ever wanted to live on Tatooine in a building much like Luke Skywalker grew up in, this is definitely your choice. So that's an example from Brenham, Texas. It's another great example. The next unit, or the next facility is from, I don't know exactly where, but the point is that these facilities are going up in different parts of the country, and they're answering the same kinds of needs that we are experiencing here in New Hampshire. And let there be no mistake, we have a serious crisis in this state in terms of housing and lodging. And the proposal here would be not for people to purchase these dwellings as condominiums or as homes that they would live in on a permanent basis, but that they would stay in and rent out temporarily. Maybe it's a contract nurse who's doing a stint at Concord Hospital coming in from Brenham, Texas. Maybe it's somebody new to the area who needs housing for two or three months while they're trying to find a single-family home where they can live. Maybe it's a young professional looking to settle in, get going on a new job, and just needs a place to land for a period of time. It answers a serious need. Not to get anecdotal, but on NPR the other night, they had a great story about how in many American cities, the entree to the city historically, back in the early part of the 20th century, late 19th century, was the hotel. So people coming in would stay in a hotel and rent rooms in a hotel and settle themselves until they could then move on to the next phase of their lives, and that the elimination of that option for temporary housing seriously impacted housing availability, and demand has skyrocketed. availability and demand has skyrocketed in the 50 years since they did away with those kinds of facilities. And we see that here in New Hampshire. The next document that is in your packet here is a series of plans. They're rough, but they're drawings of what these facilities might look like, you know, from a, in terms of a rendering, not the actual image, but the kinds of distances and construction plans and so on and so forth that you would see as part of it. And so we would ask that those be submitted into the record as well. Turning now to the legalities, and again, I want to emphasize how cool this project is. This is the sort of thing that if Concord were able to welcome a project like this, might put it on the map and certainly in the media for innovative housing solutions. It's a small piece of a very big problem that we have, but it addresses that need. With respect to the legalities of the issue, the denial or the interpretation from the code administrator very appropriately went through the allowed uses in this particular zoning district and gave every effort to see whether this project would fit under any of them. And the two closest identified by the code enforcement team were hotels and motels. And essentially, those were excluded in the analysis because according to, according to the letter denying the request, the administrative decision stated, with respect to motels, this is defined as a building which contains rooming units for transient lodging and for hotels. It said, "These types of facilities are described as having multiple sleeping units in a single building used for transient lodging." And I guess that first definition wasn't in. So I took a careful look at those definitions. And if you flip to the letter from the code administrator that is included as part of my application, the definitions from the ordinance are set forth there. And if you look at hotel or motel and inn, neither of those definitions includes the word building or talks about a single building. They talk about a lodging facility, a lodging facility. And so I think it is a stretch to say that a lodging facility and a building are synonymous, especially where we do have a housing crisis and there is discretion involved in this interpretation. I think we should favor an interpretation that allows the project to go forward. I looked elsewhere in the ordinance for the definition of a facility because that's what we should turn to and see if the city of Concord uses a definition for facility that would apply in this case. And I couldn't find any independent standing definition of facility that would help me interpret this particular provision or these two definitions. So I looked to the dictionary, and in the dictionary, it talked about a facility being something that's built for a particular purpose. And so it's also not limited to a building or a single building. It's conceptual, is the structure that has been created dedicated to a particular purpose. If you look at facility definitions under other code structures in the city of Concord, the sewer code, I think, refers to sewer facilities. And the definition includes buildings, it includes piping, it includes infrastructure. So we're talking about a matrix, an amalgam of different potential uses. So insofar as these definitions don't refer to buildings and refer to facilities, that doesn't bar a multi-structured facility which serves a hotel, motel, or inn-type purpose as a matter of law. In addition, there was some suggestion, not so much in the letter that the code team issued to my client denying the request or interpreting the ordinance, but rather in the discussions they were having about whether the duration of living in this facility would have any effect on its, on the use as interpreted under the zoning ordinance. And there was a suggestion, at least in some of the discussion, that transient living as, is included in the definition for hotel or motel and inn is limited to 30 days under the ordinance. And I think the code team recognized, and this is true as far as I can tell, that the zoning ordinance doesn't define what transient means. And instead, there was a reference, I think the code team said that the building code did contain that reference. I wasn't able to find that. I could have missed it. I could have missed it. I did a code search today using the Concord code website, and I did not find a reference to transient in the building code in terms of defining it. I did find a couple of references to transient under the different ordinances that Concord has, and they both tend to support our interpretation of this. So for example, you find the word in Article 27, Section 1-5, Amendments to the International Property Maintenance Code, and it provides, under Section 202, General Definitions, adding the following definition for rental unit. "Any residential unit in a building or single-family dwelling which provides permanent or transient living facilities for one or more persons which is occupied by tenants on a rental basis. Rental units include but are not limited to hotels, motels, dormitories, apartments, duplex units, rooms rented out of the home of another, and single-family dwellings so long as they are rented." So as far as I can tell, transient as interpreted by the Concord zoning ordinance just means you do not own it. You live there, but you don't own it, essentially. And that's the definition that jibes with the definition of transient in Webster's New International, which is where we got to look when there's no definition in the ordinance and there's nothing in the ordinance that helps us to define that term. So we look to the plain and ordinary meaning of the word, and under that definition, it says transient is passing through or by a place with only a brief stay or sojourn. Again, someone might someday say, hey, that means 30 days in my town, but that's not what the zoning ordinance says here. So it is consistent both with the definition of rental unit under the International Property Maintenance Code and with the whole point of this particular project, which is we want housing that allows somebody to stay for a given period of time, whatever that might be, and permits them to vest in the city of Concord and, you know, until they're situated here on a permanent basis. So for those reasons, we think that the interpretation of the ordinance in this case should be overruled. That's not to say that this project is going to be starting next week. There's a lot to happen between now and whenever this thing gets off the ground or gets completed, but it is a first step. I don't think as a matter of law that the ordinance bars this project in this location, and we would respectfully request that you overrule the code enforcement on this one.
Which use in the ordinance that's permitted in this zone do you think it complies with?
We think it complies with hotel, motel, which are synonymous uses under the definition, or inn, either one.
Is there any designation in the ordinance, and I have, I'll confess I looked and didn't find it today, for what we used to think of as tourist cabins?
There is not. Well, in the definitions in here, we do talk about campgrounds and lodging facilities, but not tourist cabins per se in the city of Concord.
Right, okay. Other questions?
Hi. So it doesn't just define hotel, motel, or inn as a facility, it defines them as a lodging facility.
That's correct.
And a lodging facility is defined as a building or any part of a building containing rooming units without individual cooking facilities. So without individual cooking facilities. So how do you get around that?
I think that obviously, ultimately, that could be a condition that gets placed on the interpretation. If it's a use that's permitted and my client has to come back for a variance in order to have cooking facilities in these units, that's a separate issue. It's a much smaller issue to deal with. You know, with respect to the other elements of what constitutes a hotel or a motel, what underscores these, what underscores the nature of these items is really that they are not supported individually by independent utilities and resources. So for example, if I move into one of these cabins, I'm not going to have to put down a down payment with Liberty Utilities and get an account in my name. It's all going to be run through the hotel structure itself, much as I would if I were moving into a cabin or even into a hotel downtown for a week or two at a time. I don't have to actually transfer utilities in my name. And so to that extent, it remains linked to the facility as a whole. Now, with respect to the lodging facility analysis and whether or not you can include cooking facilities, you know, if that's an element of the definition that my client is required to comply with, then we would need to seek a variance on that point. But that wasn't precisely why the code enforcement team rejected it, you know, under this analysis.
So in the materials, I believe you said you're envisioning someone could potentially rent a space for six to nine months? I mean, is there any, someone could probably rent a space for five years if they wanted, right? Like, would you, I mean, would there be any reason why someone would have to leave if they were paying?
There would be no reason why someone would have to leave. The state, from the Department of Revenue standpoint, they allow up to 185 days. So it was kind of inconsistent with that because you're paying a room and meals tax, you're paying hotel taxes, things of that nature. So that was kind of where that timeline comes from.
Oh, I see. It's taxable, it's a sales tax, I see. And so if someone stays, I don't know the exact laws on this, but if someone stops paying, doesn't pay for their hotel room, the hotel can just lock them out. But obviously, if a tenant doesn't pay rent, you have to go through a complicated eviction process. What's, what's the cutoff? Do you know?
So basically, how, from, I've been speaking with the New Hampshire Lodging and Restaurant Association, I think they're based right out of Concord, I may have flipped those two. But basically, an extended stay hotel is run just like any other, any hotel. They can stay for two weeks, you know, six months. If they're not paying, then they can be removed at any point based on the hotel guidelines and the state statutes, so.
And so this is a question for Mr. Eggleton. It's kind of a, I guess, what, what's our standard of, how much deference do we give the code administrator in this? Is, are we, are we just reviewing this as if we were looking at it fresh?
De novo.
What's that?
De novo.
Okay.
Yeah, respectfully, but, yeah.
No, it's a straight de novo. So we don't, we're not, it's not, we're not giving any deference to his viewpoint?
I mean, certainly.
Legally, not?
Yeah, yeah, no, I mean, certainly you can, you can certainly consider the argument. No, I think this board's, you know, to the extent this board exists as a finder of fact in the first instance, although you're not finding, you're doing any, not doing any fact-finding in this case, I think that suggests that your review of this decision is de novo.
Laura agrees?
Laura agrees? We're all set.
I would, if, I, just some of the other questions that had come up in our discussions, whether as to this would fit a hotel and motel model. We talked about, like you stated, whether the individual units could eventually be sold or condexed. That wouldn't be the case because it would fall under that hotel and motel. We talked about regulation size. As far as square footage goes, they would be hotel room size, so they would be consistent with the hotel room standard. And other questions that came up were if each individual unit would have their own water sewer connection, if they would have their own utility connection, the answer would be no. It's all, again, it's operated just like a hotel. It's for the entire facility. The question came up if there would be an HOA. That would not be the case, again, hotel.
HOA.
Homeowners Association, wouldn't be an issue. And their point was brought up that with hotels and motels, there's usually additional services provided. There's either a gym or, you know, laundry, and we would be, have laundry services on site, and there would also be front desk services on site. So you'd be checking in, getting your key, and going to your individual unit. So in reference to the other items that came up that kind of, in my, I'm assuming, helped define what a hotel motel was, we checked those boxes, so.
Right.
It's just basically whether or not all of, whether it's interpreted, all the units are in one building.
I'd like to back up to a question that you were discussing for those of us who are not attorneys. Does de novo mean there's no particular prejudice in favor of the code enforcement ruling?
It means we stand in the shoes of David.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You go.
As opposed to only reversing his decision if it's clearly wrong? That would be the alternative.
On appeal to court, you have to show it's unreasonable or illegal, but.
In this case, we're starting over.
We're starting over.
So we just have to decide what's the right thing to do.
Yeah.
Got it. Where were we? Did you have more for us, Mr. Eggleton?
We didn't. I mean, I can conclude just by saying that, given the fact that the zoning ordinance, I believe, and I hope you agree with me, is, doesn't define this issue. It gives some discretion here for interpreting under the particular definitions that were offered. And I think, under the circumstances, it favors permitting this particular use to be interpreted as hotel or motel or an inn.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here who's, would like to be heard in favor of this appeal? Is there anyone who'd like to be heard in opposition to it? Please come forward.
It's inexpensive, right?
Swear to tell the truth and nothing but. Would you identify yourselves for the record, please, as you testify?
Hi, I'm Dan Luker from, with Pritty Flaherty. I'm here with Mark and Hattie LaRosa. They own the property immediately adjacent to this proposed site. They have a single-family residence there with some workspace in the back. How long you been there, Mark?
Twenty-two years.
Yeah. So we, they've asked me recently to, told me about this, and they just got the notice. And so we're here in strong opposition to this proposed, I'm not sure what it is. It's like an amendment on the fly of the ordinance, but I want to first start out by, thank you for pointing out that they hang a lot of, the analysis ultimately says it's a hotel or motel, all right? And they use the facilities, it's a creative argument, and it is a cool concept, but if you go to the definition of lodging facilities, as you folks have addressed, it does talk about containing rooming units without cooking facilities, transient occupancy, including hotels, motels, and inns. So I, just out of the blocks, I think there's a problem with the logic of amending the, or overruling the administrator's decision. I have a letter here that I put together this afternoon that if I could, I'll cover the points, but before, and I'd just like to submit this for the record if that's all right.
Please do, sure.
Thank you. And I'll just try to summarize what's in the letter. First, we think the code administrator's decision was thoughtful, thorough, I mean, he went through everything. You've gone through some of it tonight, but I think he came to the only conclusion he could come to with the way the ordinance is written. In the Office Park District, housing is expressly disallowed, or not expressly, it's just not permitted, I'm sorry. permitted, I'm sorry. It's clear that it's set up for institutional, office park, and laboratory, and the like setups. There's no provision for housing there other than hotel motel, and as we talked about a little bit, this doesn't meet that definition. I also think, frankly, the board doesn't have enough information here to basically turn the ordinance on its head based on a concept. I had a hard time figuring out some of the details, how the rent's going to be paid, some of the stuff you've covered, but it is just a concept. And to turn the Office Park District and basically say you can do what is essentially a residential use just stands the ordinance on its head. Each of the 62 units, as defined in the concept, would be a dwelling unit as defined in the zoning ordinance. They'd have all the amenities, they'd have sanitation, cooking, and sleeping, that basically is the gist or the guts of a dwelling unit. Dwelling unit is residential, and there's no provision for residential use other than motel, an hotel we've talked about. Most importantly, in the concept description as presented to the code administrator, it indicated that guests, or in our view, residents, would stay for a week, or six to nine months or more. They could stay as long as they want, apparently. And that, I mean, that's great if they can pay the rent, and that's good, but it's essentially a permanent residence, if you want it to be. And you are asking to author, ask, you're being asked to authorize what is really a mini-residential subdivision without any of the constraints that you would see under Article Four, the ordinance, in terms of dimensional standards. This has all the earmarks of a subdivision, a single-family residential subdivision. It also looks a bit like a manufactured housing park, which isn't allowed in anywhere, is only allowed in three districts in the city, not this one, and it always needs a conditional use permit. It has some of the similarities to an RV park, which has its own ordinance and requires a special permit. This, again, is a residential, small resident, small homes, that's what they are. And I think the suggestion is that you, again, turn the ordinance on its head, and I just don't see any basis for that, especially given the problems with the legal analysis of motel, hotel, lodging facility. They, I know it's, nobody really knows, we can call them guests, you can call them residents, they could be residents. Once you get set up in a place like that, there's, you don't hurry to move if you like it, so you've essentially got a small house to live in. And without having to go through any of the variances or the like that you would need to put this use in this district. That's the gist of it. If you look at it closely, it's, it's a cool concept, but it's really a disguised subdivision or a single-family residential development without any of the protections or, that you need, but most importantly, in direct violation of this ordinance, which requires a variance to put housing in the Office Park District. So, I respectfully ask that you, you know, not give them a free pass to the planning board and say that this is okay, because they're going to single-handedly amend the zoning ordinance on what is an artful argument, but it's not a complete argument, and it's not a winning argument. I think the code administrator was right. This is a residential dwelling unit use, and it's not permitted in this zone. Obviously, the LaRosas, and they'll speak up if they have more to say, but this would dramatically affect, one, we don't know what would happen to the site, but it would dramatically affect the value and livability of their property, and apologize for being here on short notice, but doing our best. But we just think this would be a really drastic move for this board to overrule its own ordinance, because it's not an allowed use in this district. Any questions?
Questions to the board?
What's the nature of the, you have a business there, or what type of building do you have there?
Because, Mark LaRosa, we live there, my wife and I live there, and I run my contracting business out of there. I have, it's a non, I mean, non, illegal, non-conforming.
Okay.
And is, are there other non-conforming, single-family houses in that area?
There's two more to the west, non, legal, non-conforming residences.
Yeah.
Okay.
As you go west, it's all mostly residential. And as you turn, go right over the property, past where the site is, you get to the Bhaktash Temple, and then you get out to Sheep Davis Road.
Thank you.
You know, there's a lot of light industrial, it's a little bit of a mix, but, you know, these dome structures kind of obscure, oh, this is cool, this is, you know, different, but what's to say, they could, you know, convert sea containers to living, or a platform with a structure on it. I mean, it's kind of the same concept. And I just don't think that this use is in the spirit of the zoning for the Office Park District. I mean, you know, a normal hotel, I'd be all in favor for. Five or six stories, people moving in and out, you know, you know, working in the area, whatever they stay in a hotel for, the place is taken care of, you know, we don't know who's going to stay there. Could it be homeless people, is that transition housing, is, you know, we have a lot of problems. You know, it's just not, I think this, like Dan said, it comes, this is a residential use, it's a studio dwelling unit.
Other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to be heard in opposition? Comments from code enforcement?
With this de novo, do I get to speak to how I got to my decision?
You bet you do.
There we go. So, this was not taken lightly, there was a lot of conferences, a lot of discussions, a lot of research done. We heard them talk about cottages inside of the road, and we just, our ordinance just doesn't support that concept. The duration of stay, the extended stay aspect of it was a concern. The ordinance, again, doesn't have a mechanism to allow for that. When we talked about the building as a structure, that definition in my world came out of the IRC and the IBC, the International Building Codes, define hotels, motels as a single structure or multiple rooms in them. So, I tried real hard just to try to figure out, would this fit in that model? You already brought up the cooking facilities as a challenge for us in our ordinance. So, in the extent, that's about all. I mean, it wasn't taken lightly, and we really tried to see how this would fit, and I just could not get to a hotel motel definition for the reasons stated from both.
So, you see it as a single-family houses?
I think so. I think it might be better suited as a cluster development at some point, somewhere, but definitely, single-family is where.
Would it be in violation of the building codes because of the size of the units as single-family houses?
No, sir. They meet that requirement, yes, sir.
They do?
I guess they do.
At 314 square feet, I thought?
Okay.
They meet our code requirements, and they also meet the IRC requirement.
Very good. Questions for Mr. Hall?
Sorry, because I remember from prior cases, but maybe it's just certain zones have a minimum square footage for apartment units, right?
I'd have to look at it, you may, our ADU has a minimum size to it, that is 600 square, I think it's 600 square feet, but I don't have the ordinance.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
And we dealt with that with the homeless shelter.
Yeah, with the, on Pleasant Street.
Not the homeless shelter, the.
Yeah, the, the coalition.
Transitional housing.
Right.
That was a minimum size for an apartment.
But that's, that's specific to that zone, that's not a citywide requirement. Okay. But do you, I mean, maybe you don't, this might, I'm not sure if you can answer this, but is there any, if this was actually categorized as dwelling units, is there any residential zone that these would be allowed in, in the city?
So, there'd be individual residential units.
Yeah.
So, if you wanted to put one of these on a three-acre lot, two-acre lot, we'd say that's your house, that is fine. You'd have to meet the requirements of sewer, utility hookup. If you wanted to have multiple units on a piece of property, if it was zone residential, based on the density that we allow for that zone, we would allow multiple of these, I would believe. I'd have to look into the specifics of it. But from a building standpoint, as a residential unit, from what we've done for our preliminary research, it would be considered a legal residential unit.
Mm-hmm. Very good, thank you. Mr. Eggleton, would you like to offer factual clarification in response to anything you've heard?
Yes, thank you. I first want to make very clear that we were not suggesting that it wasn't taken lightly. We know you definitely engaged seriously in the discussion, so we're not here to make that suggestion, that's for sure. You know, with respect to the question, we don't know who's going to stay here, you know, this is a free-market society. And much as you could go to a hotel downtown, they're not going to let you stay there unless you can pay for the hotel. And so, that's what's going to happen here. You go, you pay your money, you get your key. And if you don't pay your money, you get kicked out. That's how it'll work here, just like any hotel. With respect to, and so that addresses the query of exactly how the rent is going to work and so forth. You know, there's, there's an argument, I heard, that this is really just a residential use. It's a rental use, for sure, under the international, under the segment of the code that I had read to you from the International Property Maintenance Code. It certainly meets that definition because it is transient. And lastly, with respect to this notion that we are contradicting the ordinance, this isn't a variance. We're not asking for permission to do something that is barred by the ordinance, except in sofar as it has been determined not to be compliant with the ordinance. As I suggested in my analysis, there's nothing in this ordinance that says you can't do this use. So, I'm asking for that interpretation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That will declare the public testimony portion of the hearing closed. We have before us a request to overturn the code enforcement administrator's determination that the proposed project is a collection of single-family homes and therefore not allowed in, without a variance in this particular zone. And we've heard testimony that the appellant believes that these do not qualify as single-family homes, but rather fall under the category of lodging facility hotel. Why don't we start at ear end of the table?
Great.
Thank you.
Nick slipped a $5 bill under the desk to me, just to let him off for a little while, just in interest of full disclosure.
I'm going to, I'm going to give some thoughts, but I'm not going to, I want to hear what other people say before coming to a, you know.
Fair enough.
Okay. So, my understanding of sort of the procedural posture, so to speak, is that if a proposed use does not, or a proposed project does not clearly fit into any one category, then, the code and then us, in this case, because we're being asked to, has to decide which category most, is most comparable to. So, it doesn't, I think pretty much everyone who testified agreed, it doesn't neatly fit into any one category. We have to decide which one is it closest to. It clearly doesn't meet the criteria for a hotel or an inn because, because it has a kitchen, and we've heard that a kitchen is an automatic disqualifier in, for a hotel in this city. I don't, it's not exactly like a residential dwelling because it, it's, they're, they're small studios, they're not, it's not in an apartment building, it's not, they're not being sold for individual use, they're, and their proposed use is more, in terms of the types of contracts with the residents, is closer to hotel. People do live in hotels, it's not that uncommon. And there's also residential, what seem to be residential houses that are, that are used more like hotels, like with like an Airbnb, so it's a pretty, it's a pretty dynamic, or I should say, fluid use of the words. They're not, there is a lot of overlap between what's quote a hotel and what's quote an So, I, you know, obviously, it'd be much better if the city had, had, and it really should have some kind of extended motor, I mean, there's extended motor lodge, extended stay type hotels in the area. There's one, I think, in Boscoon, there's one in Hooksett. So, I, I'm having, part of me thinks that because this specific proposal is not really very well laid out in terms of their exact concrete intent, that we might not have enough information right now on this particular project to say, but I definitely don't think it fits neatly into any category, or into either category. I mean, it could be disqualified from either category, so that's a challenge. Sorry, that's pretty inconclusive, but I'm just kind of thinking out loud.
Counselor?
I think Mr. Hall reached the right decision for the wrong reasons. I think it is clearly not a hotel or motel or an inn because of the kitchen facilities. I think it does fall within the definition of single fat, single-family detached dwelling because it's a building other than a manufactured home, designed or intended as a residence exclusively for one family and separated from other building, except accessory buildings, by side and rear yards. Do I think that there might be a different category that it would fall better into? Yes, but I don't think our zoning ordinance has that category, so this might be one of those things that's worth approaching the city council with and seeing if they want to amend the zoning ordinance to allow this kind of use. I think it's a very cool design, and I think it's a really innovative idea, and I like the idea of having this kind of thing somewhere in Concord. I just don't think it falls into the hotel motel definition because of the kitchens.
Nick, don't we have a residency inn in Concord? Because if we do, they have kitchen facilities.
Yeah, tons of hotels have kitchen facilities. I mean, I don't know about in Concord, but in general, it's.
But, but to go to the crux of it, I concur with the two of you that there isn't a neat place to put this. It does have some elements of a hotel or lodging, and it has some elements of residential units. And I think because of that, because we're not the clear definition, I'm inclined to support the code enforcement's ruling on this.
So, the one thing I'm not sure about is, I don't, is there any, I'm not sure that you can, you can have a 300-square-foot detached house. That does, to me, that does, makes it very unlike a single-family residence, especially with no bedrooms, all one open concept.
That might be an issue under the building code, but under the zoning ordinance's definitions, that's not in the definition. I don't know if it's somewhere else in the zoning ordinance, but it's not in the definition. So, I think despite the fact that the size might not be okay under the building code or the fire code or some other code, that's not really relevant to our decision about whether it's a single-family dwelling under the zoning code.
Are we sure it's not in the definitions?
Definition's in the letter, and it doesn't say anything about the size.
Okay.
Do I have my facts straight, David, that in, under the Concord zoning ordinance, if there's a kitchen in the unit, it's a dwelling unit, not a hotel room? Or is that not true?
I'm not sure it says it's a dwelling unit. We, in our ordinance, it says, if, let me read it, sir, so we can just, our definition of a lodging facility, building or any part of a building containing rooming units without individual cooking facilities, or the inn, I believe, might say the same thing, but definitely the lodging facilities, that's the definition.
Okay, well, so, the net effect is the same.
Sorry. Devil's advocate, what if, what if they say, okay, we'll just do the exact same thing, but we'll just get rid of the stove? Because obviously, every hotel, well, most hotels have microwaves, so you, that won't count as an individual kitchen facility, right?
I didn't pursue this as what they could do, meet the requirements of a hotel motel.
Right.
I, but that speaks to what I was just going to.
Yeah.
The way, to me, the kitchen is important and an important issue here. Obviously, we wouldn't be discussing this if there were a clear definition for this. And if there were a use in the Concord ordinance for what I referred to earlier as tourist cabins, I'd say that's what this is. But it, it doesn't show up anywhere, so we haven't got that to lean on. However, as I look at these, in my mind, without the kitchen, it's a totally different concept. concept than what they're proposing. It's, it becomes something else closer to a hotel. It just happens to be different pods instead of all in one building, and I think you could make the argument for that. So I don't see the variance to allow the kitchen, if that's what they came back with, if we said no kitchens, as being a minor issue.
No.
To me, it's essential to the identity, the function of this thing.
I agree.
So if that's the case, then the most likely category is some kind of dwelling unit, not a hotel or motel or an inn. And therefore, it's not specifically allowed under the ordinance, as I see it. So my personal take on this is that, right reason or wrong reasons, David, I would, I would vote to uphold the, I would vote to uphold the ruling by the Code Office.
Sorry to belabor it, because it's late, but I, I mean, I agree. I'm disappointed to agree, so I just want to say that because it, there should be room for something like this.
Absolutely.
You know, with the housing quote crisis, or whatever you want to call it, and the real, there should be a place for this, and so we would, I think, encourage the city to look at something like this. But the problem is, because there's no, nothing's owned for, do we just smack it right in the middle of anywhere that, you know, that, you know.
We don't really have that authority.
Yeah, we don't have that authority, but I guess I just want to say personally that, you know, I wish, I wish there was a place for something like this that we could look at more, more cohesively.
I think it's analogous to what we faced when the first solar panels started materializing in various places, and we didn't know where to put them, in terms of whether they structures or were they, what were they? And so eventually, the City Council had to take the issue up, planning board in the City Council, and I think that's probably what ought to happen here. Would anyone care to make a motion?
I will make a motion to deny the appeal.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, I think we've gone over the reasons in fair amount of detail, and they're all on the record. Any further discussion on the motion? Anyone in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? I hear no noes. The vote is unanimous, the request to overturn the Code Enforcement Office, Officer's Decision is denied. You're, essentially, we're affirming the decision, I guess. That takes us to the next case this evening, which is case 4522-220 Loudoun Road, CG General Commercial District by SV Property SSLLC owner. The applicant wishes to expand its legal non-conforming self-storage facility warehousing, use K7 warehousing, and the table of principal uses by adding an additional 4,000-square-foot warehouse and seeks. A special exception under Article 2884(c)(2), expansion of a non-conforming use, to allow an increase in the floor area in the amount of 9.9%. And a variance to Article 2871(a) applicability, which requires that whenever a building is constructed or enlarged, off-street parking and loading spaces shall be provided for the entire use or combination of uses. The applicant is proposing to provide a net decrease in nonconformity by proposing seven standard parking spaces and one van accessible space, where 34 standard spaces and two accessible spaces are required. A net decrease in nonconformity, because they're adding spaces?
I was not listening, and I'm sorry.
I guess the answer's yes.
I was trying to prepare.
Okay. You, you were all right with that, David? A net decrease because they're adding spaces?
Right.
Okay. Gentlemen, it's well tell the truth, another with the truth.
Yes.
Thank you. Would you identify yourselves for the record as you testify, please?
Yeah, hi, administrators and board members. I'm Doug Lee. I own and operate two self-storage facilities in the city. We actually met last year when I was doing some work on Fisherville Road, and you guys helped with the conversion of the garage, the vacant garage space that we're doing there. Anyway, I'm here with Paul Afano, who represented me last year as well, and Sean McDowell, who's with Novus Engineering. And he's working alongside his colleague, Chris Nadeau, who is more, been more involved locally. As a reminder, I'm a 30-year real estate veteran and licensed architect, and I'll turn it over to these guys to talk about the specific request, but we're here on a special exception request as well as two variances, and I'll turn it over to them.
Sean?
Yeah, sure. So I'll give you guys a quick kind of rundown of what it is we're looking to do here. So this is an existing legal non-conforming use.
I'm sorry, before you get too far in, you said two variances, but I'm only seeing one.
Yes, the application has two variances in it. I did notice that the notice, what the notice does is it references the correct article, Article 287, but there are two in your application, you'll see that there are two variance requests.
Two variances or a special exception in a variance?
One special exception, and then two variances. So what we'd like to do is do the special exception first, and then we'll get to the variances.
And just while we're working on the special exception, I will just ask you, I don't know what the public notice said, but I don't know if you're concerned about notice issues on that second variance.
Well, we have thought about it, and I'll address it when we get to, I will address it, though.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, so just getting back to it, we, this is a existing non-conforming use for self-storage. What exists on the property today is approximately 40,000 square feet of self-storage space, also in the front at the storage station. There's a 800-square-foot office on the first floor. Above that is a second floor, that's a two-bedroom apartment, that's also 800 square feet. The special exception we're seeking is to add additional self-storage of 4,000 square feet, which is under the allowed 10% increase in floor area for a non-conforming use. So that's what we're seeking for the special exception. Just to talk briefly about the parking and the variances being seeked for the parking, as it stands today, there's currently five parking spaces right along Loudoun Road. As part of this project, the city has requested, it's part of the Loudoun Road widening, that Doug gave back seven feet. So as part of that, we have to move those five parking spaces. So what we're doing is we're proposing three parking spaces along the eastern edge, still in front of the buildings, towards Loudoun Road. And then we have a few other parking spaces located towards the rear of the property. So we're going from five proposed parking spaces to seven, as well as adding an accessible space. So what would technically be required prior to this proposal was 31 required spaces, with five existing, and what is now required would be 34 total spaces with seven proposed. The other thing related to the parking I'd like to point out is, a lot of these self-storage facilities, really those spaces are more used for the office in the two-bedroom, but for the actual self-storages themselves, patrons tend to pull up next to whatever unit they're going to, they drop off their stuff, they pick up their stuff, and then they're on their way. If we were to kind of look at it that way, you know, we'd have far greater than the required number of 34 parking spaces. Just quickly looking at, you know, what you could have as a maximum parked here at one time, we're talking around 50 total spaces. And the other variance related to the parking is in regards to, in the general commercial district, parking is not allowed in front of the buildings, it's intended to be located in the side and the rear. Just want to point out that the existing spaces are in the, in the front, and really the only reason we're moving those five existing spaces is because the city's taking back some land. Otherwise, we would leave those five existing spaces as they are today. There's no other reason for us to modify those spaces otherwise. So that's, that's kind of it in a nutshell, and I can turn it over to Paul to talk more about the variance. Sure, so the special exception gets to the construction of the new building, which increases the floor area by 9.9% under the ordinance. An expansion of a non-conforming use is permitted by special exception, as long as you don't exceed 10%. So we're, we're coming at 9.9. And I do have the, if you'd like, I can go through the criteria and the, to satisfy the special exception.
Briefly.
Okay. Or, it's all in the application, if you.
Yep, and we have read it, but it never hurts to say it out loud.
So the, so there are specific criteria we have to meet in order to get the special exception. One is that they'll, will not create any undue traffic congestion or impair pedestrian safety, no new access is being proposed, and the amount of additional traffic will be, come to about six trips per day, weekday and eight on the weekend, very, very minor. This gets to the parking issue, too, that Sean was mentioning. This is a unique type of use in that the, the amount of traffic is very minor, and the parking actually takes place in front of the, in front of the units as people go in for a short period of time to load and unload what they want to take out. So that was one of the criteria. Another one is adequate and proper facilities, not overload any public or private water, drainage, significant increase in stormwater. The building will, the new building will contain no plumbing, and the increase in lot coverage will be four and a half percent, and any drainage and things like that will take care during the site review process. The requested use will not create excessive demand from municipal, police, fire protection, schools, or waste. No waste disposal is needed or provided, and no housing will be provided against a very low, low intense use on city services. The use will not create hazards to public health or safety, not be detrimental or out of character with adjacent neighborhood. The proposed use is identical to the current use of the lot, which is a permitted non-conforming use. Likewise, appropriate for the location, same reason, it's, the proposed use is identical to what's being there now, and it's consistent with the spirit and intent of the ordinance. And I, my answer there is it's specifically permitted by this special exception. And that's all I have to say about the special exception part.
Very good. Why don't you move on to the variances?
Sure.
Please.
So the variances, if, it's all combined in the same, same mailing, but the, this gets to the notice issue, the, what I put in there was the article is 287, and Article 287 deals with access, and then the specific sections, there are two specific sections which are in the application. In speaking with Bob Nado when we saw the, when I received the notice, what the city put in was, for purpose of the notice, is the general provision, which I gather is the way they handle it. So the, the notice does, the section that's cited in the, in the notice is 2871(a), which is the general applicability, is the very first paragraph of applicability of that section, which I think is adequate, and describes roughly what it is. And then there's a narrative that describes one of the, one of the two, one of the two So anyway, we're, I think the notice is fine, we're fine with it, I, right, it's our issue, not yours. So with respect to that, the first one that I listed was that there are, the number of spaces, and as Sean described, there are only five spaces now, we're actually adding spaces, we're adding a handicap space. The, there's, one thing I did want to ask you is, in the packet you have, there should be a two-page addendum, or it's, it's a front and a back. My file copy only has the front, I just want to make sure you got the, it should be two, you did get, oh, perfect, okay.
It has one through five on it.
Yes, but it's two-sided. My personal copy, I didn't copy the second side.
The one I have is not two-sided.
Two pages.
No, I have it, I have it.
Two single-sided pages?
Yes.
So it's two pages of stuff?
Yes, it's two pages, one sheet of paper.
Okay, we got it, we got it.
Thank you. So for the criteria, one is, as far as the, the special condition of the property, I think the main thing here is that it abuts Loudoun Road. And because it abuts Loudoun Road, there's a, we anticipate a request to, to transfer some frontage to the, to the city, to widen Loudoun Road, and that's what's triggering the requirement that we move the existing spaces out in front of the building. And otherwise, they're, they're conforming uses, they could remain. The only reason, then, that's triggering the, the need for variance for the spaces out front is because of the widening of the road. So that's the, yeah.
Right, not the number, just the placement of them.
That was the, yeah, that goes to the, so what I've, what I've got in here is I've got both variances, and maybe what I'll do is, what I wanted to do there was just to address the special conditions of the property, which gets to both variances, is it's on Loudoun Road and it's, and also it's just the configuration, you have a, you have a permitted use by special exception, what we're doing here. It's a legal non-conforming use that's already there. The zoning restriction as applied will interfere with the reasonable use of the property, and I'll address both variances together there. The long-term successful use of this property as a, as a highly successful self-storage demonstrates it's reasonable with, with respect to the number of spaces, with only five spaces. It's operated with five spaces for decades, I think. Yeah. So the parking space formula, which is for warehouse, just doesn't fit this type of use, and it, and the long-term use demonstrates, what's there now is perfectly adequate. And with respect to the second variance, as I mentioned, the widening of the road is what, we have to move the spaces, and therefore we have to ask for a variance, otherwise we could just keep the space that are in front of the building. Then no affair and substantial relationship exists between the general purpose of the ordinance, and the general purpose is to provide adequate parking, generally speaking. And the specific restriction, again, the parking space formula for warehouse, which yields the 34, is not designed for self-storage, as demonstrated, again, by the actual use, successful use for 30 years. And as to the, there being spaces between the buildings and Loudoun Road, we've had, there've been five there for the entire 30 years, and we're going to reduce that to three. Granted, the variance will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the ordinance. This particular district, the CG district, is designed to offer a mix of uses, citywide and regional market. Self-storage has proven to be a successful enterprise at this location, indicating that it does serve the needs of the residents of Concord and the area. And the proposed expansion continues that successful use with a modest number of, which includes a modest number of parking spaces and some, I think three, between the buildings and Loudoun Road, a decrease from the five. Third, the authorization of the variance will not be contrary to the public interest. The, again, the same reason, the district offers a mix of citywide services, and self-storage is a successful enterprise at this location, indicating that it does serve the needs of the, of the city and the regional market. Substantial justice will be done, the variance will enlarge a modest expansion, again, that's permitted by special exception, assuming we satisfy those criteria, of the existing use to meet the market, and will accommodate the city's efforts to widen Loudoun Road, which we're happy to do. Finally, the authorization will not diminish, of the variance will not diminish the value of the surrounding areas. Number one, the use is not going to change, and number two, the expansion will be modest, it's less than a 10% expansion.
I'm a little confused about the two variances versus one, which may just be a twosome on my part. David, we, in the, in the notice, which is also what the agenda shows, is a variance for expanding the use and not providing all of the parking that technically is required. Where's the second variance?
I'm not sure I understand your question. The second variance was for the, it's listed.
It's the parking in the front page.
That's on the top. Apparently, that's not allowed.
Oh, it's where the spots are located.
Oh.
In front of the building.
That's right, the ordinance is supposed to be in the side or rear in the general commercial district.
Okay, so that's not addressed in a separate application? It's all one application for a variance?
Correct.
Right. So it's all listed in the application you have, it just wasn't noticed properly, details of it, and we were comfortable trying to move forward.
Got it. Can I ask a quick question? Please.
I'm not, I don't know if it matters that much, but is, is the widening, are, are you giving or selling the city some of your land voluntarily? Or is it, they're just using the right way that they already have?
There, um, we anticipate they'll be requesting, I think the fee, I'm not sure actually who gets the fee, whether it would go to the city or whether we would keep it. But the seven feet would be added to, to Loudoun Road. So we can't use.
Of what's currently your lot, but it would likely be a voluntary agreement of the business owners?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you. Insofar as agreements like that are voluntary.
Okay. I did reach out to all the abutters and, or tried to. And at least two that I spoke to directly, the Long Romat to the east and the condo community, community to the south, both were supportive of the application.
Very good. Anything else, gentlemen?
No.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone who'd like to be heard in favor of this appeal? Is there anyone who'd like to be heard in opposition to it? Is there any comment from code enforcement?
No, thank you.
With that, we declare the public testimony portion of the hearing closed. We have a request for two variances and a special exception. Why don't we address the special exception first? This is a request to expand a, an existing nonconforming use by less than 10 percent. We heard testimony that the use will be pretty much exactly the same as the use that's already there, which has not created any violations of the requirements of a special exception so far. Nick, let's start with your end. What do you think?
Yeah, I, I mean, on special exceptions, all we need to do is, if it meets the requisite findings, A through I, we're in a position of granted.
Very good. Ms. Specter Morgan, what do you think?
Based on the application and the special exception criteria that are set forth therein, I believe all of the special exception criteria are met.
Right, and all of the criteria, I don't have my packs anymore for some reason, but all of the criteria relate to burden on city resources. And pretty obviously, this wouldn't really make any, any difference.
Right. I agree with my colleagues. Would anyone care to make a motion?
Move approval.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And I believe the vote is unanimous. The special exception is granted. Now we move to the variances, which pertain to both the number of parking spaces and the location of parking spaces. We heard testimony that the parking spaces that are currently in the Loudoun Road side of the building cannot remain because, some of them cannot remain because of the city's request that that land be kept vacant for future expansion of the road. And we also heard testimony that the parking requirement is far in excess of what is truly needed for this type of use. Andrew, what do you think?
I mean, it, it's, I guess it falls under warehousing, but, but as they said, a storage unit, a lot of people, probably most people, they drop off their stuff and some of them don't come back for years. You know, not too many people are going in and out. And if they do, they're not using parking spaces. They're just, they're parking in front of their unit, getting their stuff. It's very low impact. So it, because of the specific type of use, it, it does seem reasonable that they would have far fewer parking spaces than necessary. Should I address the second variance to the location?
Sure, sure, sure.
It's been functioning there. It's, I suppose the purpose of it is, you know, not having a lot of parking up front where, you know, people could see, other businesses could be an eyesore or, or, but it's a very heavily trafficked area, at least relative for Concord standards. And it, it doesn't seem that it has created any issue. And, and again, there probably be not too many people parking there at any given time anyway. So I think both the variances seem reasonable.
Laura?
I agree. And I don't think either variance will alter the essential character of the neighborhood. I don't think either variance will diminish surrounding property values. And I don't think there's any substantial justice for denying them. I think the property is unique, given the nonconforming use on the property and the application of the actual parking requirements to this property don't make a lot of sense in terms of striped parking. And in terms of actual parking, they do probably have sufficient parking in between the buildings and outside the doors to the facilities. So I would be in favor of granting the variance, both of them.
Thank you. Nick?
I agree with what Laura said.
What she said. I agree with what she said too. And with what, what Andrew said. I agree with my colleagues. Would, in, in the case of both variances, would anyone care to make a motion?
I move to approve both variances.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? The vote is unanimous. Both variances are granted. That brings us to the last case on our agenda this evening, which is another case where we are being asked to overrule the code enforcement administrator's determination as opposed to being asked to grant a variance or a special exception. This is case 4622, 135 North State Street, RN Neighborhood Residential District, by 135 NSSLLC owner. The applicant seeks review of administrator's decision regarding the current uses of 135 North State Street in comparison to the permitted uses and current zoning relief for the property. Variances were granted for the principal use F, of F1 with three to four live-work units. During a recent interview of the property and website, it was determined that the carriage house is being used in a different classification than general professional business and was classified as a commercial indoor recreational facility use C3. I swear you're both in. Swear I tell the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Very good, thank you. Before you begin, you submitted a fairly extensive memorandum, which we have read.
We did.
And it's late.
Yes, it is late. It's way past my bedtime.
Yes. So I encourage you to be as concise as you can be, understanding that we have already read the information, the information that he submitted.
I appreciate that. Good evening.
Good evening. And would you identify yourself for the record, please?
Yes. My name is Kelly Opa-Cuck. I am attorney to the applicant, 135 NSSLLC, which is the legal owner of the property. I have with me the principal and manager of the owner, Fred Potter. We've been, we've, we've been before you before. And in fact, probably most, if not all of you are, are very familiar with this property. It's got a long history. This has been a project in the works for multiple years. So I am going to try and be brief, but also kind of preserve for the record a little bit of what's going on here. So we have a PowerPoint. I think if you hit slideshow, is there, it will do the whole screen, maybe. So this is 135 North State Street. As I mentioned, you're probably all familiar with this property. It's about a half acre lot. It was the former site of the, the church rectory that was demolished and the Rollins Court Pocket Neighborhood was put in. Go ahead, David, to the next. Okay, there we go. So there it is. It's on the corner of North State Street and Church Street there. These are two historic buildings on the site. One known as the Rollins Mans, because it was originally occupied by Governor Rollins. And in the back of that, what we call the carriage house. They are on the National Registry of Historic Places. They are very old, large historic buildings that are expensive to preserve, expensive to maintain in an unusual kind of place in the city, which is zoned RN, largely residential. But there are, because it's a historic area of the city, there are a lot of other mixed uses. I don't need to talk to you about why we got the variances in the first place, but we did. We were granted a number of variances in order to facilitate the use and renovation of this project. The next couple sites kind of walk you through the history. So in June of 2018, John Chorlian, the prior owner, and at that time, he may have not even been the owner. He might have just had the property under contract with the church, came and he got a variance for the Mans only, because at that point in time, the vision was that the Mans property was going to be separated from the carriage house property. The carriage, or the carriage house building would be part of the Pocket Neighborhood. So the variance in June of 2018 was to permit use of an existing building for general office use, which is use F1 plus live-work for three to four residential units within this building. Again, it was a rectory. It had been used for kind of this live-work, flexible, fluid concept for a long time. We were asking to continue that kind of use, but in a business setting. John came back in September of that same year, after architectural design review had suggested that the carriage and the Mans be kept together. So at that point, the proposal added another variance. And I've lined through the variances that were superseded. So that, I'm not, I'm not going through those. Those were later superseded. You, you can take time. I'm going to leave this PowerPoint with you. It'll be part of the record. Oh, sorry, David, can you just go back a screen? So September 2018, John Chorlian comes back. He gets a variance to use the carriage house building for a community room, fitness room and garage storage as accessory uses to the principal use on the property, which is the Mans as the office and live-work. So at that point, he was in negotiations with Fred. Fred was hopefully going to be the intended buyer, but those things were still being sorted out. So John came back in September. I think that, that date may not be right, that September 7th, 2018 date. But case 2319, he came back and said, well, if I want to keep these and I want to make them part of the Pocket Neighborhood, I'm going to need variances for that. And he got those variances. That one was largely completely superseded because Fred did end up ultimately entering into purchase and sale agreement with John and bought the properties. In June of 2019, with these variances in hand, including a, a variance for parking, we, we went to planning. And we got planning board approval. The plans that went before planning board were consistent with the zoning board. We were constantly in communication with Craig Walker and the whole planning team at the time. For those of you who don't, weren't, weren't around or don't recall, Craig was the code enforcement officer, about what the plan was and all along the plan was going to be. Those office use, very, very, very high-end offices, because that was really the only thing that fit that building and would allow it to be preserved in a cost-effective and historically sensitive way. And then the three to four live-work units. And then the carriage house, again, would be used for community room, which is what we call, we called that kind of gathering space there. Some fitness room. I think at the time, it had eight space, spaces depicted for eight yoga mats. And then a golf simulator room. This was all before the planning board in 2019, 2020. Those, those were the plans. It was accessory, the community room, the golf simulator room and the, then yoga room. Now it's a racing simulator room, were all accessory, to be used primarily by the occupants. There was some discussion early on that it would also be used by Rollins Court. They would have some access to that. That never came to fruition. There was always some discussion that would be kind of open to other external uses on a limited basis, community uses, open to nonprofits, similar to the way a lot of our businesses, you know, allow nonprofit board meetings in their conference rooms or occasionally rent out offices on an as-needed basis. So then the final thing before the zoning board was, after construction had already commenced in 2020, so building permit was issued, construction had commenced, we had to come back to the zoning board because structurally, the carriage house, sorry, a lot of talking dry air. Structurally, the carriage house was determined not to be able to support the configuration that was originally contemplated. So we ended up pulling out two parking spaces that were originally going to be in that carriage house and moving that gathering space to the first floor. But otherwise, the same, so really the relief there was on the parking. So all of those are kind of reiterated and left with what we have right now. So we have variances for what I already said, the, you know, F1 office use with live-work residential units in the Mans. And then accessory uses as that community room, conference kind of space, gathering space, and then some fitness game rooms. And that is exactly how we're using it. So after all of this long process to get approvals, very expensive construction, Fred is now finally up and running. He's even since we submitted this appeal, has the four racing simulators installed. Can you go ahead and go to the next screen? So here's the before, pre-renovation pictures. Go ahead, David. And then here's the post-renovation pictures. Buildings really just, they look the same. They're updated. If you've been over there, you'll see how beautifully, how meticulously these renovations have been done. Go ahead, some more pictures here. And then there's just the carriage house. So here is the layout that was before, that was originally in the plans for November of 2018, very early on in this process. And you'll see here, there was conference space. I know this is kind of tiny, but the first floor is over on the right-hand side and the second floor is on the left-hand side. I think that's right. Conference space, game room space. It's all the same spaces, really. Go ahead, David.
Sorry, I'm missing your key.
No, that's okay. Here's the plans as we were going, getting building permits. We had already gotten planning board approval. And you'll see here, this was when the, those two parking spaces had been pulled out. And these were really life safety plans. So here it depicts, I think, 97 chairs, because for life safety purposes, that's what we have to show. Those are not fixed seats. And occupancy in that gathering space is never intended to be that high. In fact, the most it's ever been up to this point in time is 25. So here's under construction, those two game fitness spaces. And here we are constructed. So this is the bottom floor, coming in the door. There's a little bit of flex space there on the right. There's a small kitchen. Go ahead. This is the golf simulator spa, the golf simulator room. And you'll see, this equipment is taking up a huge amount of the room. It's not like you're, we're going to have droves of people in here. There's four racing simulators.
Can you go back to those?
Yep. So as I said at the time we submitted this appeal, these were on their way to being shipped here. They're 900 pounds each. They obviously had to be professionally installed. They'd be very difficult to move. And you can see, they take up a huge amount of room in there. There's not a lot of room for, you know, a lot of people. At the most, you know, I think Fred's policy is eight people in this room, max. Obviously, only one person can use the racing simulator at a time. Go ahead, David.
What is it simulating exactly, like a race car?
Racing, racing.
And at your position, those are fitness machines. You're going to have to break that down for me.
So the community gathering event room, this is that room that you saw the 97 seats for life safety purposes in. This is how it's typically configured. We have trainings for Fred's business legacy-wise. This is available space for nonprofits. It's available to the business tenants. And then it's also available on a very limited basis to others. And I'll talk about that in a minute. But this is the typical configuration. Nope, you can go ahead, David. That's fine. So the primary concern here seems to be parking. It has always been parking for this. And what is the use going to be? And how is it going to impact parking? And is there going to be enough parking? So we've kept parking counts now that this is all constructed and operation for June and July here. And you'll see, we have 16, 16 spaces. Well, we have 14 spaces constructed and then two other spaces by CUP. So 14 spaces constructed. We almost never even reach half of that. So there's also on, you know, there's street parking in this area as well. And there's other parking available to Fred on, as needed. He also owns the property over at 125. So I think that's the end of the presentation. Okay. So with all that said, what's happened here is code administrator Hall was, came to see how the facility was being used. Some of the neighbors at Rollins Court were objecting to some of the proposed plans for construction at 125 and filed a complaint with him, I understand, which brought to his attention the question of whether this use was in accordance with the zoning relief that had granted. So I believe he came for two visits. We've been in communication. We've provided. So I believe he came for two visits. We've been in communication. We've provided him information. And ultimately, he issued a determination letter at the beginning of June. And essentially, you know, our position is that he's trying to impermissibly reclassify the uses, that the current uses are consistent with what was presented all along. They're consistent with the zoning relief. And any attempt to reclassify those uses and recalculate the parking at this point, it shouldn't be permitted. This went through a very lengthy and exhaustive land use approval process. There was a lot of money spent to construct this, and it's being operated as intended. So at this point, to go back and say, oh, no, we're going to now change the classification on you and we're going to require different parking than the code enforcement officer was advising us through this whole process is completely unreasonable. So there's three main issues. The first one is with the mans. And what's going on there is, so there's four work, live work units there. The live work was contemplated to be used by Fred's business called Legacy Wise, which has a fellows program so that recent graduate school graduates, primarily law school graduates who were looking to transition between school and full-time career and also wanted to do some kind of public interest work could work for Legacy Wise, which provides low cost or no cost estate planning services to people of modest means, could come and be kind of trained in this and mentored in this. And they could live on site and they could have some community and connection. So this was the idea. It's been slower getting off the ground than Fred had hoped. We had COVID. You know, there was other, there were other things going on that has caused this to be a little slower than hoped. And he had a vacant space and he had a community, some member of his community who was in need of housing. And so he agreed to lease out that, one of those units to somebody. I think the lease runs through next?
June.
June. And she's living there and she's, and she's not, you know, other than, I think she largely works from, you know, works out of her space, like a lot of us do now. You know, she's not working for the BIA, which occupies the property. She's not working for Legacy Wise. So the concern is, is this consistent with what was anticipated for live use? And we think it is. We think that that space there is primarily a residential space and that it's, the live work is coexisting with office use also in that building. And it might be that the residents there also work there. It might be that the residents there, you know, have their own business or are working independently. But it's a use that's kind of flexible, which is what the prior use had been. And I just, so, and there are, we took a look at some of the minutes in the audio. So this issue actually came up. So live work is not a defined term. It was something that was determined by Craig Walker at the time to kind of, to be a use that he classified as residential, but permitted, you know, by variance in this building, in this structure, and that it, but that it didn't really have a defined term. So, and this came up at the hearing. I'm sorry, I'm trying to find my reference. Okay, June 13th, 2018. One of the board members asked, so live work references in quotes, is that the applicant made it up or is it kind of term of art? Have we seen this anywhere before? And Craig says, it is terminology that is regularly used in different aspects. Often times, it applies to perhaps an artist that has a studio that they live in. It could be other, a couple of people perhaps living in the residence and working there. You know, we looked at this building here and separated the two uses, the residential use versus the office use, and we calculated the parking separately, too. There are other ways perhaps to look at this. I use the term rooming house. This is in parentheses, a rooming house, but is not a rooming house because those are open to the general public. These residences here are for people working there. It still has two separate uses. So I think-
Were you reading from the minutes or was that, was that like a transcript?
That's transcribed from the audio.
Okay.
Because the minutes say, three or four large, three or four live workspaces, some interns will be offered housing. The living space will not be offered to the public.
So. So I think that was the intent all along, is that these residential spaces, and that is still the intent. As Fred grows this business, his hope is that these spaces will be used primarily by his Legacy Wise fellows. But on the other hand, as circumstance, there are residential spaces and it doesn't make sense for them to just sit vacant. And I think based on, you know, what, the way Craig interpreted this and the way he reiterated it to the board at the hearing, that this use really has some flexibility to it. It doesn't have clear defined boundaries. It's a, it's a live use, it's a residential use that's coexisting in harmony with a business use. And often, it might overlap, but I don't think it's necessary for it to overlap. And that was why he did the parking calculations separately for each space. So the other, so the other two issues have to do with the carriage house. And those issues really are around the use of those amenities that are accessory to the mansion property. The golf simulator, the racing simulator, and then the communities, that community kind of gathering space, community room. So, and code administrator Hall looked at those and he's, and he determined that those met different classifications. So at the time, they were approved as accessory uses, but the space is built as they were. And he determined that the gaming rooms, which had been in the plans all along, and I want to address your, that the gaming rooms were essentially because they were available for rent on a very limited basis. And I can answer questions about that, but it's all in, it's also all in the long narrative that we submitted. That the gaming rooms should properly be classified as C3, which is a totally different use. It's an entertainment and recreation use. And that because they should be classified as that use, the parking calculation was now erroneous and needed to be redone. Similarly, with the community room, he determined this was now a public assembly use. The determination letter, I think, isn't, isn't, doesn't quite state that, but I think that's the conclusion you have to reach, that he reclassified it as a public assembly use. And that similarly, because it was now a different use, the parking calculation needed to be redone and the variance that we got for parking was no longer valid. However, these uses were exactly the same uses that, you know, were before all of the boards that we discussed with Craig Walker, that he, we negotiate, you know, he advised us on what relief we needed to seek. And they are primarily used by the businesses that are occupying the space, the businesses that are on a neighboring space, 125. And they're only available to the public on a very limited basis. So Fred has this, what he calls the governor's center, which includes all of the office spaces at both 125, 135. And he allows people to basically become a member of the governor's center and then use all of the facilities on, on a certain basis, on a basically limited fee basis, reservation only. He also uses, he allows nonprofits to come in and use the spaces on a reservation basis and typically not for a fee. And then on a very, very limited basis, others, if the spaces are not being used, can lease these spaces, again, on a reservation-only basis for limited periods of time.
Is that documented anywhere? Do you have a document about how that policy works?
So I think some of it is in our narrative, but I think you're looking for something. So some of this is governed by agreements. You know, there's a lease agreement with BIA, who's currently the tenant of the mans building.
BFA.
I'm sorry, BFA.
Business Finance Authority of New Hampshire is a primary occupant of the building.
Yes, thank you for that clarification. And then I'm assuming, but I'll let Fred speak to this, that the governor's center members have some kind of agreement that they-
They have an agreement.
Sign.
But where's the policy about how often the public can rent it?
It's, it's on an as-available system. It's not open generally to the public at all times for all needs. The primary uses are the Legacy Wise fellows, two of whom are now here. We were delayed in hiring because of that. And the businesses, Business Finance Authority specifically negotiated for extensive use rights during the business day. And for the members and employees of the two buildings. So these are amenity packages that support much like the higher-end employers in downtown Boston, West Coast. I'm familiar with the tech industry. This is a very common aspect of an office building-
Sure.
-in those industries. That's, in fact, 80% plus of the uses. And we contemplate the business uses absorbing more of it over time. We have two of the fellows who are here today and another one's coming in two weeks. The reason the lease expires in June is our next recruiting season starts for law students graduating next May. And we anticipate that it will be law students in the whole building. But there is no prescribed cap. We abide by the noise ordinance and all those kinds of things and the parking. And the fellows actually are responsible for monitoring things. It had no impact on the community. And of course, you have lots of letters in there about that. The other main threat of this is this is taking what was an intensively public use facility that is St. Peter's Church Rectory Carriage House, for which public uses have been available for more than four decades, predates the zoning ordinance. And all those uses have been continued and diminished in this 135 property. There's still community use, a lot of community use because the primary uses here are not-for-profit. I think you saw it, it's like 80% of the uses or something like that. There, the residences, of course, of the Rollins Court now has taken that back to residential use. But in our particular parcel, we're a continuation of the church-community focus. And that's what Craig Walker was striving for.
Right.
We really tried to comply. This is a four-year process. We tried to do every jot and tittle along the way. And we really thought we did. And in fact, to our knowledge, there's no parking issues here. But that's, that's just a factual fact.
Right, right, right.
And you've got your testimony from the neighborhood about that fact. And you've got the stats here, which we've kept for months.
So, so as I was like, I was thinking about this and I was thinking about, okay, you know, this, these are business facilities. We have some amenities similar to, you know, what you might see in Boston, what you might see in LA that are going to support businesses and bring people in for high-end business uses. And how is this different from, say, if, you know, my, for example, my firm up until recently had an arrangement with a business in Boston where we could, we had the ability to house. So.
So I hear what you're saying and it's 10 o'clock and there's no way I'm going to be prepared to make a decision tonight. We have minutes from one meeting from 2018. I would be really interested in seeing the minutes.
The package I gave you-
Yeah.
-handed out, that has several different minutes in it.
Does it? Does it have something in here about the fitness room?
It looks like it's only 2013. That's because that's the heading of 2013.
It's been a four-year process.
Yes, this has been a very long process.
Look at the case numbers. I'm sorry, 2418 is a different, I didn't put the months that those meetings were in.
And does one of these have something to do with the fitness room?
Um, yes.
Yes?
Yes.
And one of these has something to do with the conference space? Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, all right. So I'm going to need to read these.
And we're totally fine. There's a lot to digest here. There's a lot to go through this process. These approvals have evolved over time. You know, there have been changes. There were multiple proponents. So I totally get that there is a lot to go through here.
Can you, but can you break down for me how the car racing simulators are fitness equipment?
So I, I think, I totally hear you. But, and I think there are certain things that for some people, it's going to, they're going to consider it a sport and some people are going to consider it an entertainment. And it's very subjective. You know, I'm a marathon runner. I don't consider golf to be an athletic activity, but I know there are people who do. So, and I do think that that kind of falls along these lines. It's not the spectators who are going out to the track in Loudon, who are sitting there watching and probably, you know, burning more, you know, consuming more calories than they're burning. So I agree. It's something that's subject to interpretation, but I can certainly see how something like a batting cage, a golf simulator, a racing simulator, which that underlying activity is, has athletic components to it. And so is by a simulation driving you of those athletic components? You know, my kids used to play Wii. Were they not getting any exercise because they were doing it through some kind of gaming platform? That's definitely beyond-
We could go in circles on this one for quite a while.
Yes, I agree.
I think we've probably covered that topic as well as we can.
Thank you.
Which, which, is, is that the end of your presentation or?
I think that's the end of my presentation. Is there anything else that you would like to add, Fred?
Other than I, I would encourage you, I think there are two lines of operating authority. One is the legacy use of this entire facility as a major community event room that had all these kind of activities going on it. And this whole development has brought all that down to 135, which we own and occupy and are continuing that same community focus. And so there's that, plus the specific zoning relief that we obtained as we were guided to do so. And the rental uses were disclosed from the very beginning. We knew this was a ramp-up, tiny business that didn't even open its doors Legacy Wise, and now has two of the three initial fellows and one more coming probably next June. It's, it was contemplated, disclosed, discussed. And from the applicant's perspective, we're now $5 million later. And we did everything we were asked to do. And all of this was known and disclosed in every step of the way. So that's all. And I, I appreciate that.
Thank you. I want to chat with the board here for a minute. Typically, we do not keep going after 10 o'clock for obvious reasons. And so I'm wondering how we might like to handle this situation. We've also been given a bunch of information that I know I don't, can't absorb sitting here. And I think it's going to be extremely important to understanding what we're doing.
I think that I agree. I'd have a hard time deciding. And because even going from memory, this was a very convoluted, it was-
It was complicated and it came out several times.
But I think that, because it does seem there are people here who want to speak who've been waiting a long time and who, you know, might not want to come back, you know, if they, so I, I'd be okay with letting everyone who wants to talk, talk, but-
And then continuing it to the August meeting.
Resessing our decision because we need to review everything.
Okay. Nick, how's that sound to you?
Yeah, I agree.
Laura?
That's fine.
All right. Thank you very much.
Can I just ask for clarification on the process?
We're going to hear from the public and then continue.
The hearing will be continued.
Can you close the public portion of the hearing tonight?
I would say no.
Okay.
Okay, because we have some speakers who could come back later to save you time.
We can, we can reopen the public portion if we need to, even if we did close it. But I, I think-
No, no, we can't.
We can't.
We have to continue the public hearing if we're going to take public input in the future. So if you, yes, we could reopen the public hearing if we decide we need to, but then we'd have to re-notice it.
Oh, I see what you mean.
If we don't close it and we just continue it-
Then we don't have to re-notice it.
Then we don't have to re-notice it.
Okay.
Question, I mean, my, my view is if, and it's late for me, too, because, but if we can get all the public, because-
No, your point's well taken.
Yeah, if we reset, then there's more public, you know, then we'll just have a whole nother hearing.
Yeah. In other words, out of courtesy to the people who came tonight, let's, let's hear what they have to say.
But we may have more questions at the next meeting. So I don't want to close the public hearing because I want to be able to ask the questions.
But, but can we say everyone who's here to talk can talk once?
Yes, no, absolutely.
They're not going to come back and all talk again, right?
Yes, yes.
All right. We can continue the hearing. Thank you.
Thank you.
We also, if, may we also say if anybody would rather come back and talk to you at the next, they don't talk at all now and they're permitted to come back?
That's fine, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, that's true.
Thank you.
As far as continuation goes, I'm not, I'm not going to, I'm going to be out of the country.
In August?
In, well, in, for the September meeting. So I would, I think probably we would want to look at doing this before that, like-
Oh, it is August, isn't it?
It's August and next Wednesday is booked for us if that's an option for the board to consider.
Next Wednesday?
Is open here.
Okay, so I could do next Wednesday.
I think I could do next Wednesday.
I think I can do next Wednesday.
Okay. Is there anyone who'd like to be heard in favor of this appeal? Please come forward. Swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Would you identify yourselves for the record, please?
Alberto Hernandez. I'm a Legacy Wise fellow and the current resident of 135.
Could I get your first name again?
Alberto.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
And a current resident of 135 North State Street, the Mans.
Ma'am?
Grateful Itiowe, also a resident of 135, and a legacy wise fellow.
First name again?
Grateful.
Grateful.
What a pretty name.
Thank you.
And last name again?
I-T-I-O-W-E, Itiowe.
Ah.
Itiowe.
Thank you, I apologize for making you say it twice. Please let us know what you'd like us to hear.
Okay, so legacy wise gives service to low and middle-income individuals that cannot hire traditional attorneys for estate plan and documents. We hold our seminars in the first floor of the Carriage House, which has been customized for it, like, have you seen the pictures? And the second floor, we use it for enhancement of community life. Like, I personally use the, the simulators, the, the golf simulators, which I also point out, they're, they can, it's also a baseball simulator, a soccer simulator, a basketball simulator. I've currently exercised there, I've, I've used it as an exercise room also. Lost a few pounds, I don't know if you could see it, but yes, I've used it for them.
That figures heavily in our decision.
But the racing simulators, have you used those to exercise?
We, they're, they're very recent.
It's a joke, it's a joke.
Mine is slightly different. I recently joined the fellowship, and getting in, it was like, where are the human beings in this place? And thankfully, occasionally, on my way to the Carriage House, I'll see my neighbors, they will say hi, I will smile, and I'll go in to do my work. But very recently, when the race cars were installed, I told some friends about it, and that was like my very first time of having Africans show up, and they were happy to do that because of the space. It was a unique space, it was an enclosed space, and it was just beautiful to see for me, you know, having that conversation, and having that fellowship and community. It was also in the Carriage House that I saw my first Koreans, and so I'm just seeing it as also having a space that people are comfortable creating diversity in the city of Concord. And Fred has so graciously provided these things for free. We're leaving there for free, we're using all those facilities for free, it's not something you see. So I'm saying, anything to keep this going, that would be really helpful, and it's, it's just been a blessing to this community, if you ask me. It's been a blessing to us, as fellows, as international student graduates, who are just privileged to be in this space, in the city of Concord, and this space has provided something we can call home, and where people can visit us and be comfortable, you know, and just, it's amazing. You need to come see it yourself.
We also take great care when you use the facilities to not make noise that might disturb our, our fellow neighbors.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who'd like to be heard in favor of this appeal? Is there anyone who'd like to be heard in opposition to it? Please come forward.
Thank you.
Swear to tell the truth and nothing but.
I do, thank you. My name is Nick Holmes, and I'm a resident of Rollins Court. My wife, Richard, and I live in 131 North State Street, Unit 7. It is, our back door is kitty-corner to the Carriage House, it's within fifty or sixty feet of the Carriage House. The issue here today is whether the intended use of the Carriage House, which I would submit to this board, is as an event space that is rented out to the public in general, is permitted by the variances that John Shorelian obtained in 2018.
That's one of the, that's one of the issues.
That's the primary issue. I, I haven't, the issue with the apartment, I'm not going to take a position on, I really, that does not impact me. I would submit to this board that those variances that John got do not justify the current and intended use. We have, if this, if the use of the Carriage House was limited to these students or these young attorneys who just moved in, or into the business that rented 135 North State Street, I'd have no objection, but that is not what is happening. Mr. Potter is marketing this property actively. He has a website to market this property, he has a Facebook page where he markets the use of this property, where he advertises the use of this property for all sorts of things, and that is not consistent with the variances that were obtained. If he wants to use it for those types of purposes, he should be required to come back before this board and try to obtain the variances that are required for those types of purposes. He has a variance to use it as an accessory to the people that work and live in the Mans, not beyond that, and it is clear that he's intending to use it beyond it. We were, I was one of the people that initiated this process by raising a concern with the administrator, code administrator. Our concern is because of the expanded commercial use in this neighborhood. You're all familiar with Rollins Court, eight residential cottages. Mr. Potter owned three businesses, three properties that were adjacent to us, he's recently acquired five more, he's all around us in this neighborhood. He's talked about expanding parking in backyards and all sorts of things. We're concerned, or at least my wife and I are concerned, about the growing commercial use in our residential neighborhood, which we don't think is proper. I have a handout that I'll hand out, and this will just demonstrate some of our concerns. Yeah, thank you. Thank you. The first photograph is of the signboard in front of 135 North State Street. You can see Rollins Court in the background, and the reason why I took this photograph is to point out what the third sign is. The third sign is advertising simply the best receptions. And if you flip to Page 2, you can see it's advertising simply the best receptions. It has a telephone number there. I believe that is Mr. Potter's real estate company that he's marketing as have, as hosting receptions at this property. If you turn to the third page, these are two photographs I took off of Google Maps, it shows that Mr. Potter has installed traffic control devices in order, because he anticipates that there is going to be a large volume of traffic for his businesses, so he wants them to go in a certain pattern. That is our driveway that he has put these signs on. If you turn to the fourth page, this is a press release that came out several months ago, this is just one example of how he's ho, using this property and advertising that they can host their events there, for your friends, family, and colleagues, corporate events, things like that. The next page, and I'm just going very quickly because of the hour, this is a photograph that I pulled off of his website today. This is the room on the first floor of the Carriage House. It's set up and clearly being marketed for a wedding reception or a bridal shower. This is not the community gathering room that the variance was extended for. This is a commercial enterprise in a residential neighborhood. The last page is just a snippet from Mr. Potter's application that he signed on February 15th, 2020, when he was before you asking for an adjustment in the number of parking spaces. At that point, he said, he described the spaces in the Carriage House, and he said, "These spaces in the Carriage House are intended to be used as amenities for the office and the live-work use of the mansion." If that's what he was doing, we wouldn't have a problem, but it's clear that he is doing more than that, and he's planning on doing more of that, and trying to do more than that. I share your concern about the racing simulators being exercise machines. I have a, have a thirteen-year-old son who used to tell his mother that playing Nintendo qualified as exercise. Those are not, they're a different thing. If he wants to do a different thing, fine, but get a variance so he can do a different thing, don't try to squeeze them in. I could go on for hours, but I won't because of the time.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for listening.
Any questions from the board? No, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to be heard?
Rebuttal?
Code first.
If I could indulge for a couple more minutes, I know it's late, but I'd like to get my.
We'll chat more on Wednesday.
I'm sure.
Of next week.
So, I, I tend to agree that the, what Fred Potter's done with these facilities has been amazing. I wasn't part of the minutes or the zoning review three years ago, so I had to rely a lot of my decision based on minutes. But there's nothing wrong with the quality and the intent of what he tried to present. I agree with what the individual just said here, when he asked me to look into this, I looked at the website, I looked at the minutes, and I said, "I just didn't interpret it as an F1 business use." He was absolutely moving to the outside. So, 125, 135, 131, the parking neighborhood, they've been interlinked for several years, and it's been a very complex but open process going through that. We've talked about the appeals, the variances that were granted. In her letter, you know, I have a responsibility to respond when people ask me to look into a situation. It wasn't done out of malice, it wasn't done out of anything other than, someone asked me to look into this, so I did, and I found some, what I believe were discrepancies on variances that were presented versus what I'm seeing now as the use. She talks about the square footage for the parking. Unfortunately, the code makes me look at the measurement of the room as far as what's presented in the building plan to us. If the building plan would have shown those units in there, in that they were fixed units, we possibly could have considered it as a smaller square footage. I'm certainly open to discuss, the parking counts aren't written in stone that we came up with, it was just really a rough estimate of what I think we were heading towards versus what was granted. The real issue here tonight is, is the use, what, being used, what was variances granted I know he talks about temporary relief for the residential unit. Again, it's an RN, it is authorized, a residential unit, the RN, I just don't think the live-work was presented to the public use, as you've read in the minutes. I think it'd be an easy enough thing for, to work through as far as a joint use for a business or a commercial and residential use, to get a separate variance for that if they wanted to use it as a rental unit. The minutes you see that I sent out talk about, John Shorelian, when he first presented, it said to be max of four people for the live-work units. So that's what I was basing my thought on, and I see that they think they can possibly rent all four of those out, though I know you're not doing that now. It's really the long-term potential for what this could become if the variances aren't adjusted, or if the use isn't adjusted properly. There are no parking complaints now, but the racing simulators just went in. The golf simulator, he's, he's advertising, so I'm just concerned from the code administrator what's going to happen to this property from a use standpoint in that regard. I know she talked about COVID-19, the pandemic, and that he's been setback with some of that, but unfortunately, we know that a financial hardship, or financial economic reasons cannot be impacted by the variance or use. So my, I can hand this out to, send this out to Attorney Parker.
This meeting, the minutes?
These are my notes that will help you understand how I got to where I was. I'll send it to the board members via email, along with Attorney Parker and Mr. Potter tomorrow. But that's just a quick summary of how I got to where I was. What a concern is to F1 business use. I agree if it was all, if the accessory use was strictly for the businesses renting out his space, I have no problem with that. Occasional rental of a conference room doesn't make it a conference center, I agree with that. It's really the Carriage House where my focus was on, and the wedding receptions, and where that, what was that going to generate for parking? Thank you, sir.
Questions from the board?
Yeah.
Just real quick, did, do I have the June 2018 minutes? How many?
Well, I handed out there, and I'm sorry I did a bad job of editing, it was all excerpts of all the minutes, I just didn't put the new dates, you'll see the case numbers change.
Oh, okay.
I did a poor job of identifying the dates of those, but if you look at the case numbers, you'll see that it follows this years as it goes through.
Okay, no, no problem, thank, yeah, I get it, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Potter, Ms. Obit Puck, would you like to offer factual clarification in response to anything you've heard?
Can we offer additional clarification at the next hearing?
Sure.
Thanks, I appreciate that, thank you.
All right. Consistent with the discussion that we had with the board earlier, I'd suggest that we recess the hearing.
Continue the hearing.
Continue the hearing. Continue the hearing.
Until one week from today?
I should have watched Perry Mason.
Until August 10.
Was that August 10?
August 10.
That's a week from tonight.
At 7:00 p.m.
That work for everybody? Yeah.
Gonna have to.
Okay, and in the meantime, you will distribute the notes that you just discussed with.
Right, to all, all parties.
Do I hear a motion to continue the hearing?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The vote is unanimous. We will rally round here at seven o'clock, a week from tonight, and we'll pick up where we left off.
And we're just going to do this?
Yes.
Okay.
No notices required, this is, who's listening.
We'll pick up where we left off.
Knows that we're going to finish this hearing already.
Thank you for rescuing me.
Thank you for letting me.